Councillors, please stand. Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here and are here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make here today. Amen. Brisbane City Council acknowledges this country and its traditional custodians. We acknowledge and respect the spiritual relationship between the traditional custodians and this country, which has inspired language, songs, dance, law and dreaming stories over many thousands of years. We pay our respects to elders, those who have passed into the dreaming, those here today, those of tomorrow. May we continue to peacefully walk together in gratitude, respect and kindness in caring for this country and one another. Please be seated, councillors. I declare the meeting open. councillor Hutton, do we have any apologies? councillor Cassidy?
Thanks very much, Chair. I wish to advise councillor Griffiths will be absent from today's meeting and move that he be granted a leave of absence.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Collier that councillor Griffiths be granted a leave of absence from today's meeting. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Confirmation of minutes, please.
Mister Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,724th meeting, held on Tuesday the 24th of October 2023, be received, taken as read and confirmed.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Hutton and seconded by councillor Jenkinson that the meeting of the 4,724th meeting of council, held on the 24th of October 2023, be received, taken as read and confirmed. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, we move on to question times. Question time, are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or Civic Cabinet Chair of or of any of the standing committees? Councillor Atwood?
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee, councillor Allen. Councillor Allen, in the last two weeks, in the middle of a housing crisis, the Greens Labour Coalition of Chaos have announced two new taxes on Brisbane property, making finding a home that little bit harder. Can you please update the chamber on what the Shrima Council is doing to help create more homes throughout Brisbane?
Councillor Allen, you've got the call.
Well, thank you, Mister Chair, and through you, I'd like to thank councillor Atwood for the question. Mister Chair, last week, this chamber approved our housing supply incentive policy, which forms part of our housing supply action plan. The plan focuses on incentivising the industry to build new homes by reducing infrastructure charges for eligible projects. Our plan is in stark contrast to the destructive Greens Labour Coalition of Chaos, who have released near identical twin plans to whack the housing sector with massive new taxes. Any additional cost added to building new homes will not only drive up the cost of owning and renting a home, but also reduce the supply of rental properties across the city. Recent research has shown that 40% of investors from Queensland have sold at least one investment property in the past 12 months. This is the highest rate across the country.
Wow.
Forty-seven percent of the investors who have sold their property have advised that governments-
Just just one moment, councillor Allen. Councillors, I'm going to remind the chamber that we will hear questions and answer in silence again today. Councillor Cassidy? Councillor Allen, you've got the call.
Forty-seven percent of the investors who sold their property have advised that governments increasing or threatening to increase taxes, duties and levies is the main reason making it less attractive to retain their investment properties. Other reasons include changing tenancy legislation and rental freezes, a need to reduce total borrowings due to rising interest rates and positive selling market conditions. But what is more worrying is who they are selling to. Seventy-three percent of investment properties sold have been to either existing homeowners or first home buyers. In comparison, only 24% were sold to another investor, meaning many of those investment properties were removed from the rental market. Adding additional costs such as a vacancy tax will only force more investors to sell and reduce the number of properties available for rental. This will have severe consequences for the 34% of householders who rent in Brisbane, who will see decreasing vacancy rates and increased rental prices. Mister Chair, in comparison, this side of the chamber is getting on with the job, whether this be through incentives that encourage more homes to be built or through facilitating more supply to be built. We have a strong track record when it comes to ensuring Brisbane has an adequate and diverse housing supply while also ensuring growth occurs in a sustainable way and our city's unique character is preserved. One element of the solution is to increase housing supply, which in turn will help address affordability and meet future expected demand. Last month, in September, we saw the biggest month for development applications in more than a year with a record 1,072 new dwellings being approved. This is nearly double the monthly average of 568 new homes between September 2022 and September 2023. The record September development approvals were underpinned by two significant new projects: a build-to-rent development at 186 Wickham Street, Fortitude Valley, which will deliver an additional 628 dwellings, and the unique cylinder design at 10 Cordelia Street, South Brisbane, that will provide 256 new homes in a range of bedroom options across 30 storeys.
Just one moment, councillor Allen. Councillor Cassidy, if you'd like to have a conversation, can you remove yourself to the antechamber and have it out there? Either that that be a conversation with your colleagues or yourself. Councillor Allen?
Thank you, Mister Chair. Unlike the destructive Green Labour Coalition of Chaos, who are promising high-density development in low-density areas, we are facilitating the delivery of housing supply and housing forms that reflect the community's values and expectations about how our city is developed, in the right locations that are serviced by good public transport and amenity. The opposition have refused to tell residents which suburbs they will be increasing density in. However, the Shrima Council will stay committed to ensuring that there is sufficient supply of well-designed housing in the right locations, delivering diverse housing options for all stages of life and maintaining and enhancing our city's lifestyle, as we have always done. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you, councillor Allen. Are there any further questions? Councillor Collier?
Thanks, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, will you condemn the comments made by your LNP councillor Fiona Hammond this morning, who referred to another female councillor as, and I quote-
Councillors, silence. Councillor Collier, I do know that you're new to this chamber and you weren't here for that ruling, but I will let it pass in this case. But there was a ruling made in this chamber that there's no swearing to occur. And the swearing of the terms that are used are at my discretion, that's an inappropriate use of the word in this chamber. Right, Lord Mayor? Thank you. Lord Mayor?
Thank you, Mister Chair. Look, councillor Collier should know the rules, and the rules are very clear when it comes to this meeting and other meetings such as committee meetings, and that is, if someone says something which is inappropriate, in the spur of the moment, which they then withdraw, then it is withdrawn from the record, and that has occurred.
Further questions? Councillor Hammond?
Put my glasses on, sorry, Mister Chair. My question is to the Chair of Infrastructure Committee, councillor Wines. Councillor Wines, earlier this year, the Albanese government paused funding on critical road projects and dubbed it a 90-day review. Can you please update the chamber on the impacts to Brisbane motorists caused by the review, and what is the definition of 90 days? Are you aware of any other interpretations?
Councillor Wines, you've got the call.
Thank you, Mister Chair, and I thank councillor Hammond for her question and her ongoing interest. Councillor Hammond has always been a dedicated defender of the North Side and very keenly interested in ensuring the projects are delivered for our North Side community. Now, councillor Hammond has asked an interesting question. Are there any other interpretations of 90 days? I would say 90 days is 90 calendar days, roughly three months, but to the federal government, that would be 90 days to them is 184 calendar days, and nearly six months, that we have been waiting for further advice on this review. Councillors would recall that we engaged with the federal government to get them to guarantee the money for Beams Road. That was quite an effort to get that guarantee, and I just want councillors to understand, all we have on that is a letter of comfort from the minister, not an actual payment of the funds committed by them to us. Officially speaking, they are still within the limbo of this event that the federal government brought on unnecessarily. Therefore, council has accepted the cost risk involved with that and the risk of the federal government withdrawing their support, because as councillors would know, we are proceeding with that project. Had we not, the cost risk associated with it was significant. Our tenderers were indicating that they were prepared to withdraw and then reoffer those contracts that we got through the tender process at a significantly higher price had we not engaged at that time. That same attitude that as each day passes, road projects become more expensive is real. As we wait for the federal government to make their determination, the price of our inputs continues to increase, whether that be bitumen, 40% increase, cement, in some instances, a 200% increase, steel, 50 to 60% increase, and then of course, labour costs on top of that, which continue to rise. These costs occur on each project, they incur as each and every day passes. We have, as an organisation, meaningfully engaged and relied upon statements made by the federal government that they would keep their word. It's increasingly concerning that their word cannot be relied upon. We believe that if a project is funded through Blackspot or Roads to Recovery, that it will be funded. That has been an assurance given to us, but again, a verbal assurance. We would hope to be able to rely on those statements. We have also learned that there is still one project outstanding that is, that we don't have some kind of indication on from the federal government, and that's of course the Lindem Crossing, where we are dependent, this project is dependent on a $20 million contribution from the federal government. Now, let's recall that council has done one safety upgrade already on a state government asset outside of our jurisdiction. Excuse me. Council has also engaged in a second project in that, a project in that area, which included, at this point, extensive work with Queensland Rail, which are politely a difficult group of people to work with, extensive work with them to get to a certain point. We have purchased land from nearby residences and prepared that land as a site office for our future project. So council is elbow deep on this one, but we've also indicated, we've also received indication from councillor Whitme through her campaign against the council, that the Labor government is indicating through their agents like her, that they are preparing to withdraw from that funding and then blame it on us. Well, that is not the case, do not blame it on us. If this project is at risk, it is because the federal Labor government is withdrawing the funds. Now, if councillor Whitme was a genuine, if she were a genuine Winham community member-
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor Whitme.
This is imputing motive, I never said anything about the federal government.
Councillor Whitme, I don't uphold your point of order. Councillor Wines, you've got the call.
She would be calling on the federal government to keep their word, not trying to run cover and try and blame someone else like us, even though we are so clearly committed to delivering that project for that community. It is interesting that we've got to this point. Councillors should recall that we asked this place to vote in favour of a federal, calling on the federal government to fund that project, and councillor Whitme refused to support that resolution. She refused to support that resolution, she's calling, she's running protection for the federal government because she knows that they're going to pull the funding on Lindam, and she's looking for someone to blame.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor Whitme.
This has crossed so far beyond imputing motive.
Councillor Whitme, there is no imputing motive in meetings like the law. I don't uphold your point of order. Councillor Wines, please continue.
I trust, yeah, Mister Chair, I trust that the future will prove me correct, because I think that councillor Whitme is well-connected with the Labor Party, she is well-informed about the circumstances of that.
Councillor Wines, your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Cassidy?
Thanks very much, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee, councillor Davis. Councillor Davis, the Lord Mayor has said cuts would have to come from the clean, green initiatives of your LNP administration to plug his $400 million budget black hole. Drainage projects, environmental management, tree planting, all of these things are now on the chopping block because of this Lord Mayor's cuts and chaos. Do you continue to support cuts to environmental programmes?
Councillor Davis, you've got the call.
Well, thank you, Mister Chair, and I thank councillor Cassidy for the question, and as the Lord Mayor did announce not so long ago, we are reducing council spending by 10% to keep rates down for ratepayers. We are undertaking a review at the moment right across council and including my portfolio area, to look at ways at which we might be able to rejig some of the projects, but at the moment, we are continuing as we always have with the projects in my portfolio area. I support the Lord Mayor in what he is attempting to do. We're seeing increased costs in materials to council. We had a, you know, we had a flood, we had a pandemic, there was a war in the Ukraine, all things that have contributed, all things that have contributed, Mister Chair.
Just one moment, councillor Davis, can you turn your microphone off, please? Councillor Davis, turn your microphone off, please. Councillor Cassidy, I've already spoken to you about having conversations verbally, quite loudly, in the chamber. Consider this your second warning. That goes for councillors on both sides of the chamber. Councillor Davis, you've got the call.
Oh, well, thank you very much, Mister Chair. As I said, we had a pandemic, we had floods, we've had a war in Ukraine, and inflation that we could not have envisaged was going to impact on the cost of running this council. So Mister-
Councillor Massey? Councillor Cassidy? Can you turn your microphone off, please, councillor Davis? Thank you. I will remind you one last time. There is no calling out across the chamber in this place. Councillor Davis?
Thank you, Mister Chair. So we are doing what every household in Queensland, and particularly Brisbane, are doing, and that is, in a cost of living crisis that we have before us, is looking at ways that we can do things better and still be able to deliver the important things that our community is after. Unfortunately, the destructive Greens Labour Coalition of Chaos opposes doing anything that means that we are looking at sensible savings to try and make sure that we put downward pressure on residential rates, but we will do the financially responsible thing and undertake to look at ways that we can still deliver our services to the people of Brisbane in the manner in which they would like. So those projects that have already commenced across portfolio, whether that's drainage projects or park projects or any other projects, will continue, and we'll look at ways that we can continue to deliver those other projects into the future. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you, councillor Davis. Further questions?
My question is to the Chair of the Transport Committee, councillor Murphy. Councillor Murphy, Brisbane is Australia's fastest-growing capital city, and now is the time to be investing in better public transport. Can you please update the chamber on the Shrima Council's Gold City Glider proposal?
Councillor Dixon, can you wait until I give you the call? That's okay, that's okay. Councillor Murphy, you've got the call.
Well, thank you, Chair, and I know councillor Dixon has a keen interest in the progress of the Gold City Glider, as it's going to provide a critical connection for that growing community in Hamilton Ward. Now, you'll remember, Chair, almost 18 months ago, I shared with the chamber that we had then submitted the business case for the new Gold City Glider to Translink. Just to remind you what the Gold City Glider is, it is a service to link Hamilton and Wollongaba via Bowen Hills that will provide a consistent, high-frequency turn-up-and-go service for those high-density suburbs. In designing the route, we took advantage of the fact that Kingston Smith Drive can now deliver more frequent and reliable public transport thanks to the indented bus stops that Labor opposed. We know that residents there want more options for leaving their cars at home and to reduce local traffic congestion. So that's why just a few months ago, the Lord Mayor committed that Brisbane City Council would fund 50% of this service. The route was designed and we made a number of adjustments based on feedback from Translink. We designed a new Gold City Glider rap, and the money was on the table. We had planned to implement the service by November, Chair. Well, today is the 31st of October, as we know, so tomorrow, our calendars will roll over to November, but sadly, we are no closer to seeing Gold City Glider's roll down Kingston Smith Drive. Now, we've been working in good faith with Translink, our network planners, we have refined the route and we have completed additional modelling to show that there is strong patronage demand. The business case has now been sitting with the state for approval for almost 18 months, but it must be sitting at the bottom of a drawer in a back office, Chair, because we still do not have an answer to our proposal. Instead, all we've heard from Translink is that they won't be providing their share of funding for the Gold City Glider. This Labor state government have proven time and time again that they have no interest in providing growth funding for buses in Brisbane, despite the fact that we are growing faster than any other capital city in the country. We've been upfront and honest in this place, of course, about the cost pressures that council is facing, and we're implementing a range of sensible savings in order to manage that, Chair. Despite this, we've been very clear that we will not be reducing any funding for bus services, because we know that they are critical to the millions of Brisbane residents who catch our buses. But let's contrast that with the state government, a government that just last week told us that their massive $14 billion surplus was $1.6 billion higher than originally expected. How is it, Chair, that the state can boast about how much money they have, but still can't cough up for a single new bus service in Brisbane? We know that council's bus services move more than two-thirds of Brisbane public transport users, far more than rail, but we have seen and we continue to see chronic underinvestment in the city's bus network from the state government. Minister Bailey, it will happily throw billions of dollars at the rail network, but for a fraction of that investment, we could see real tangible improvements in the bus network, and we could see them almost overnight. With the switch of a number in a media release, just a tap on a keyboard, Chair, we know Minister Bailey can find $2.4 billion extra for new trains, but a lazy couple of million for buses in Brisbane seems to be far too hard. Now, Translink have done the dirty work for him, Chair, they have asked for modelling, we've gone back and forth with letters for years, having chats, talking about, discussing, debating, but the thing with Translink is that they talk a lot, but they never invest. They never invest in Brisbane's bus services, nor shall Hamilton, Bowen Hills, Queens Wharf, Wollongaba, all priority development areas that the state has set up, and guess what, the Gold City Glider would service all of those high-density areas. The demand is here today, and as we have proven through our modelling, we imagine that demand will skyrocket into the future. And that is why this Shrima Council Chair will not stop fighting for what's right, and the Gold City Glider is worth fighting for, Chair. The Lord Mayor is fighting for it, I'm fighting for it, councillor Dixon is fighting for it, and councillor Howard is fighting for it. And I hope that councillor Massey will keep fighting for it as well, Chair, because I know what an advocate councillor Sri Ranganathan was for this service as well. The only people who are not on board with the Gold City Glider are the people down in George Street, who continue to punish this council, punish the people of this city, because the council is liberal. Let's be honest about it, and for 10 years, we have put up with no investment in bus services in the capital city as a result. That's not good enough, but the good news is, I think people are starting to wake up to that fact, and I think they will face a reckoning in October next year as a result.
Further questions? Councillor Massey?
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. I've been contacted by multiple Brisbane City Council workers whose jobs are on the chopping block because of your forthcoming budget cuts. I've also been contacted by numerous workers working for businesses with council contractors whose jobs have been cut, some with only 24 hours' notice. These are regular people, gardeners, library workers and long-time contractors within the council administration, just to mention a few, and they all now face an uncertain future and mounting bills amidst the cost of living crisis. This is a direct result of your mismanagement of the 2023/24 budget. They and the people of Brisbane deserve to know how many job losses your budget cuts will create. So will you tell us today the total number of jobs being lost due to your mismanagement of the budget?
Lord Mayor?
Well, thank you, councillor Massey. Great to see the Green Labour Coalition of Chaos on message together, saying exactly the same thing. I'm sure they have meetings together to talk about their council strategy. When we had councillor Sri Ranganathan here, he actually did his own thing, he had his own thoughts and own policies, but we see councillor Massey in lockstep with the Labor councillors, saying the same things, sprouting the same lines, and justifying why they want ratepayers to pay more under a Green Labour Coalition of Chaos. We will make sensible savings to make sure that we keep rates low. We have the lowest residential rates in South East Queensland, and we have committed to keep it that way. We are absolutely determined to keep it that way. Despite the cost pressures on every level of government, we know the other two levels of government will keep sailing into the abyss. They will keep sailing into the abyss, and then everyone will have to pay for their lack of foresight. We're taking the decision now to keep the costs down on the people of Brisbane. We make no apology for keeping those rates down, we make no apology for making the tough decisions now to save ratepayers later. But I did hear one particular thing that stood out to me in that question, a claim that library workers, councillor Massey claimed that library workers were somehow under threat. This is completely false. This is completely false. There are no casual staff in our libraries, there are only permanent staff in our libraries. So to continue to cause concerns by peddling mistruths-
Just one moment, sorry, Lord Mayor, thank you. Councillor Johnson, you weren't here for the initial warning, which I appreciate, but let me inform you that there is no calling out across the chamber today for question time, during question time, during answers or any other further part of the meeting. Thank you. Lord Mayor?
Thank you, Mister Chair. There are no casual or agency staff working in our libraries, so, and this has been confirmed, it was confirmed last week, when Labor and the Greens started peddling these mistruths, yet they continue to make these claims, they are simply not true. I will go again and confirm what has been stated. When I stood up transparently on the 17th of October, in my press conference to explain what was happening going forward, I said, we've made the commitment that no permanent council staff will be impacted.
Point of order, councillor Massey, just one moment, Lord Mayor, point of order, councillor Massey.
The question was the number of lost staff, both contractors and contractors within Brisbane City Council.
I don't uphold your point of order, I believe the Lord Mayor is answering the question. Lord Mayor, you've got the call.
We've made the commitment that no permanent council staff will be impacted as a result of these changes. What will happen is we will be reducing consultancies, we will be reducing agency work, and these things, I think, are reasonable responses. So I said that on day one, I followed that up on radio with the same confirmation to council staff. So the permanent council staff, obviously, they've got jobs, they'll keep their jobs. That's, you know, something we've made a commitment on, but there are consultants, there are contractors, there are agency staff, and we can identify 10% savings across those areas, definitely. I've been very upfront about this, been very upfront about this, and so I repeat again, there will be sensible, sensible savings across council to make sure we can keep rates down for ratepayers.
Councillor Murphy? The same warning goes for you, there is no calling out across the chamber. Any directing or calling out to other councillors will be done via the Chair. Lord Mayor?
So we've seen Labor and the Greens, the Coalition of Chaos, trying to scare library workers, we've seen them trying to scare bus- We've seen them trying to scare bus operators, bus drivers. And in both cases, we've confirmed that there are no agency or casual staff in libraries. We've also confirmed that there's no changes to bus services. So there will be no requirement for reduced staffing in bus services. The bus services continue as they have been contracted to do. Yet Labour and the Greens, the coalition of chaos, continue to try to scare people. It is shameful. They're scared. They're scared because of the mistruths being peddled by the Labour-Green coalition of chaos.
Councillor Massey, you asked a question. It's being answered. Listen to the answer. It is being answered. Don't argue with me. It is being answered. Now, give the respect to listen to the answer in silence. Lord Mayor.
Now, it's interesting. You're seeing the political lines being peddled in this chamber, but what does the largest union in Brisbane City Council say about all this? In a message to staff, they said, "The council has been in touch with our union and assured us that we will be consulted over any changes that impact our members. This consultation will occur when the council have finished working through any potential changes and the impacts that they may have." It's times like these when it's important to remind yourself and your colleagues that you have a fantastic EBA, the one that we agreed to with our staff in partnership because we respect our staff and we appreciate our staff, and they do a great job.
Lord Mayor, I'm sorry, your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Atwood.
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee, Councillor Davis. Councillor Davis, this Shrinna Council has a strong record delivering new and improved parks right across the city. Can you please update the chamber on the latest recognition we have received for the rejuvenation at Hanlon Park?
Councillor Davis, you've got the call.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. And through you, I thank Councillor Atwood for the question, and it's always great to have the opportunity to talk about the award-winning rejuvenation of Norman Creek at Hanlon Park, Baruda. And as you know, Mr. Chair, this was a very bold and innovative project and involved the removal of a 100-year-old concrete drain and the realignment of this stretch of Norman Creek, which transformed it into a very vibrant and flood-resilient urban waterway. And it didn't take long, Mr. Chair, after the completion of the project in 2022, for the awards to start flowing in. The first was winning the Stormwater Queensland Award for Excellence in Integrated Stormwater Management, which we were very excited about winning. But then we won the Australian Institute of Landscape Architects Queensland Awards in the Land Management and Open Space category. And earlier this month, Mr. Chair, the project was recognised again with not one, not two, but three national awards. Firstly, the Parks and Open Space Award of Excellence, which is the first and highest award given by the AIL to a work judged to be the most significant advancement of landscape architecture in each of the categories. The second was the National Landscape Architecture Award, which is awarded to a work of excellence demonstrating consummate skills, contributing to the advancement of landscape architecture. And last, but not least, was the Climate Positive Design Award, which is awarded to projects that show significant effort in climate change mitigation and climate change adaptation. Mr. Chair, Hanlon Park was actually the first-ever winner of the Climate Positive Design Award, and it's great that the carbon reduction and climate resilience benefits of the project have been recognised in this way because it was always part of the outcomes that we were seeking to achieve through this project. Mr. Chair, we're now seeing biodiversity benefits with recent surveys detecting aquatic species not found in this section of the creek for many years. We've planted 170 new trees and more than 11,000 shrubs, and not only does it provide a new pocket of urban habitat, it's helped the space become very much a green community hub. And of course, it was an ambitious experiment in hydraulic engineering and flood resilience, and it worked, Mr. Chair. When the 2022 floods came through, Hanlon Park, Baruda held up extraordinarily well. We lost a couple of young plants which hadn't yet established, but aside from that, this stretch of Norman Creek did what it was designed to do and needed little more than a good hose down afterwards. So it's not surprising that there's been so much interest in the project, particularly since its completion last year. Hanlon Park was also recently showcased on Gardening Australia, who called it a valuable asset for both the environment and the community who enjoys it. And that's been reaffirmed in the Courier-Mails list of Queensland Best New Playground and Open Spaces in 2023. So it is a very rewarding experience to be commended for these achievements. As Councillor Cunningham will tell you, Mr. Chair, Hanlon Park is loved by the local community. But we also received great feedback from people who are visiting Brisbane also. It's actually become a feature on the itineraries of visiting dignitaries and industry leaders because there is nothing else like it in Australia. We recently gave Lord Mayor Moira Weir from the city of Onkaparinga in South Australia a site tour of the park while she was in town for the Asia-Pacific City Summit. She told us that she was specifically interested in visiting the site. In fact, she said it was an amazing project, and she wanted to see it in person, and of course, she was not disappointed. We've also had Lockyer Valley Regional Council send a delegation of their councillors to learn more about the great work we did on the flood mitigation aspects of the project, which they told us would help them develop a flood mitigation strategy for Laidley. And in November, we will be hosting the Western Sydney Rivers Task Force, who are coming to learn about how we've taken a drainage project and turned it into something transformational for the surrounding community. So for everybody across Australia, or anywhere else for that matter, who wants to visit Hanlon Park for themselves, the invitation is always open. So once again, Mr. Chair, I'd like to thank the Lord Mayor for progressing this project, Councillor Cunningham for her advocacy, N4C for collaborating with us, and of course, the very dedicated team in news. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councillor Davis. Councillor Whitme.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. My question is to Chair of Finance and City Governance Committee, Councillor Cunningham. The Lord Mayor said that council employees would be spared from his $400 million budget cuts. But now we know casual employees by council have been let go, and the reason that was given was budget cuts. How many council employees have been sacked in the last 14 days since you endorsed the Lord Mayor's budget chaos?
Councillor Cunningham.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Chair, and thanks to Councillor Whitme for the question. What has become clear to me over the past few weeks, Mr. Chair, is that Labour and the Greens think there should be no limit to the amount of money that council should spend. Labour want to keep on spending with no plan to pay for it other than to push higher rates onto residents in Brisbane. They have no plan. On this side of the chamber, Mr. Chair, we know that we must make sensible savings now so that residents don't pay more later. We need to take the prompt action, and that's exactly what the Lord Mayor has done, Mr. Chair. Other governments might respond to circumstances like this by increasing taxes and charges, by relying on coal royalties, Mr. Chair.
Point of order, Councillor Whitme.
Yeah, relevance. My question was very, very clear. I'm asking for a figure, not a big speech. Cheers.
Councillor Whitme, I consider that to be quite rude. Councillor Cunningham, do not. Do not. Councillor Cunningham has a total of five minutes to respond to the answer. Councillor Cunningham is just getting started. Councillor Cunningham, please continue. You've got the call.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I am just getting started, and I do have five minutes, and I intend to take the whole time, Mr. Chair. Because we will make the sensible savings now. This side of the chamber will make the hard decisions so that residents don't pay more later. Households are doing it tough, Mr. Chair, and I think for anyone to come in here and deny that that is the case is wrong. Whether it's road projects, footpaths, playgrounds, back-of-house functions, or consultancies, when costs go up, Mr. Chair, it's pretty simple. You need to make savings to balance the budget. We're not going to make extra borrowings, Mr. Chair. We're not. We certainly are not going to jack up the rates. We're not cancelling our cost-of-living initiatives at a time when the residents of Brisbane need support. We are reducing our costs. We are making sensible savings, which is the responsible thing to do. Our approach is actually about protecting ratepayers for the future, putting downward pressure on rates and downward pressure on inflation. And what's more, Mr. Chair, is we're doing it in a very upfront, open, and transparent way.
Just one moment, Councillor Cassidy. Ah, Councillor Cunningham. Councillor Cassidy, I consider you displaying unsuitable meeting conduct, and in accordance with Meetings Local Law, Section 21.4 of the Meetings Local Law, I hereby request that you refrain from calling out across the chamber. Councillor Cunningham, you've got the call.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Now, as I said last week, and I'll say it again today, the only ones worried about their job security are the Labour Party. They are peddling mistruths when it comes to casuals, and they'll do anything for a headline, Mr. Chair. They are desperate.
Councillor Collier. Councillor Cunningham.
Mr. Chair, casual work is based on demand, and it's based on shift availability. If there isn't work to do, Mr. Chair, then we don't employ people for the sake of it. It should be a fairly obvious principle, but it's actually quite contrary to fundamental beliefs.
Just one moment, Councillor Cunningham. Point of order.
Yeah, just back on to that figure. I know that on this side of the chamber, at least five people have spoken to casuals who have lost their job with the notice given as budget cuts.
So you're rising on a point of order. What's your point of order, Councillor Whitme?
It's relevance. It's the actual number. How many have been given the reason, budget cuts.
Thank you, Councillor Whitme. Councillor Cunningham, you've got the call. You have just a minute fifteen, I think, to answer the question.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. It should be a fairly obvious principle, but it's contrary to the fundamental beliefs of the Labour Party because ratepayers should expect council to be as efficient as possible, and they can trust this side of the chamber, the Shrinna Council, to provide that value for money. This has always been the case, but especially must ring true during a cost-of-living crisis. Now, I am getting to the point, Mr. Chair, because Treasurer Cameron Dick used to think the same thing. When the state government expenses were increasing during the pandemic, he also made a statement about sensible savings. Treasurer Dick said, and I quote, "We have a solemn obligation to ensure that every dollar of Queensland taxpayers' money works as hard as possible and is not wasted," end quote. Mr. Chair, the same goes for ratepayers' money. The treasurer's saving drive wasn't $400 million, but rather $3 billion in savings.
Point of order, Chair. Now, he announced at the same time...
Just one moment, Councillor Cunningham. Point of order, Councillor Whitme.
Still not hearing a figure.
Thank you, Councillor Whitme. You're rising on relevance. Councillor Cunningham, your time has expired.
Oh, shame.
If you hadn't have risen on a point of order, she would have still had time. Further questions of the Lord Mayor or Cabinet Chairs? Just one moment. Councillor Whitme, I consider you are displaying unsuitable meeting conduct, and in accordance with Section 21.4 of Meetings Local Law 2001, I hereby request that you also refrain from calling out across the chamber. Councillor Jenkinson.
Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Transport Committee, Councillor Murphy. Councillor Murphy, the Shrinna Council's Brisbane Metro is already award-winning, but I hear there is a new accolade for the project. Can you please update the chamber on the latest award for the Brisbane Metro?
Councillor Murphy.
Thank you, Chair, and through you, thank you to Councillor Jenkinson for the question. Councillor Jenkinson was quite right when she said that Brisbane Metro was already internationally acclaimed and multi-award-winning. We know Brisbane Metro is the Hugh Jackman of public transport, Chair. It is very much a high performer. And in 2020, just to recap, the project won the Metropolitan Innovation Prize at the city's Power Partnership Climate Awards for our unique charging solution. And in 2020, we were awarded our first UITP award, which is the International Union for Public Transport, in the Operational and Technological Excellence category. Earlier this year, we won another UITP Special Recognition Award for the engagement materials we produced as part of Brisbane's new bus network. And last week, Chair, we added a few more trophies to the shelf. I'm very proud to share with the chamber that the Brisbane Metro project took out not one, not two, but three awards at the Australasian Conference for the International Association of Public Participation, or IAP2, as many of you will know it. The IAP2 awards are all about recognising excellence in public participation and community engagement. Now, we started with a win in the Infrastructure Planning and Design category for our work with the Brisbane Metro Accessibility Working Group. There's that one for you, Lord Mayor. Now, that made us eligible for the main awards ceremony, and last Wednesday night, I was honoured to accept the IAP2 Australasian Project of the Year Award on behalf of council and the Brisbane Metro team. So that's another one for you there, Lord Mayor. And as a surprise on the night, we also received an honourable mention in the International Project of the Year category as well, Chair. So that one for you there, Lord Mayor. Now, this set of awards is particularly special because, as I mentioned, they recognise the engagement between council and Brisbane's disability community. And for those who know, in 2019, we formed the Brisbane Metro Accessibility Working Group to bring together the community to co-design elements of the project, from the vehicle design to our infrastructure works and our customer experience, to maximise accessibility for people of all ages and abilities. And to be honest, Chair, when we commenced our engagement with the working group, it was a very open-ended process, and we genuinely did not know where that would lead. Our intention was to create a public transport experience that exceeded that of any you could find in the country, and certainly exceed all of our legislative requirements. Now, since 2019, we've been working with that group to design the metro vehicle. It goes without saying, this is the most significant co-design process council has ever undertaken, and one that will transform the future of public transport in this country. We know that slogan, connecting residents to the people and places they love, has one been long the core goals of Brisbane Metro. But being able to actually deliver on that promise by providing a safe and accessible public transport for everyone right across our community is something that we on this side of the chamber are truly proud of. By working together with the accessibility community and their advocates, we've been able to achieve a vehicle design that will provide independence, dignity, and a choice for everyone. When these members of the group saw the changes that they had asked for implemented on the metro pilot vehicle, many of them were moved to tears, and many of them said it was the first time they felt confident to use public transport in our city. And in my mind, Chair, that is the greatest prize of all. The vehicle co-design process resulted in over 35 major design changes to the metro vehicle, making it Australia's most accessible public transport option. I have to thank the members of the working group, as well as members of the metro team, particularly Shaun, Arun, Dion, Nancy, Gavin, Amy, Bethan, and Laura, who have all been critical to delivering that co-design process. I know that many have built truly meaningful relationships with the group members, and their own perspectives on accessibility and community engagement have been changed permanently as a result. Most importantly, their work has ensured that people with a disability will be able to use one of the most accessible vehicles in the country when Brisbane Metro commences operations in late 2024. This award means so much to us here at council, but we know it means more to the Accessibility Working Group for the outcomes that they have fought for and achieved, which has seen this project recognised now on the international stage. With that, Chair, I'd like to just finish by paying special tribute to Wendy Lovelace, one of the original members of our Accessibility Working Group, who sadly passed away last year. We benefited from Wendy's expertise in so many ways, not only as a member of the group, but in also many other voluntary advisory roles that councillors will know her in. She was committed to improving accessibility in our city, and these awards are part of her enduring legacy.
Thank you, Councillor Murphy. That then ends question time. Lord Mayor, Establishment and Coordination Committee, please.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, Councillor Strunk.
Thank you, Chair. I move the suspension of standing orders to move the following motion.
Seconded.
That the Lord Mayor immediately release a list of services and programmes under the review of the budget cuts that will affect our seniors. Cutting seniors' programmes will put pressure on the cost of living.
Sorry, Councillor Strunk, you're going into the substantive motion. Sorry, councillor Strunk, you're going into the substantive motion. You're putting a motion forward as to why we should suspend standing orders for three minutes? So you've got three minutes?
Yep.
To address why the motion that you would like to put was not on the papers before one o'clock yesterday?
Absolutely, Chair. This is urgent because there is nothing in the agenda.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order, Deputy Mayor.
I would like to ask you a question. I believe there's no such thing as urgency. This is about why it couldn't be on the motion on papers yesterday.
Yes, I understand that and I've given.
I'll use a different word then.
Just one moment, councillor Strunk. I've given councillor Strunk three minutes to address why the motion he would like to put was not on the papers.
This is an important motion because there is nothing in the agenda today of the 400 cuts review that will actually help advance the issue here today that I raise. I received a number of calls on Monday afternoon, actually, it was from about 11.30 on, from a series of residents who brought up this issue and asked me to address it. The cutting of seniors' programs will put pressure under the cost of living.
Sorry, councillor Strunk, again, you're going back to the motion you would like to put. I would like you to establish why you could not get your motion on the papers before one o'clock yesterday.
I've just actually said that, Chair.
Then that's fine. That's it. We can put the. Quiet, please, councillors. Then that's fine, councillor Strunk. We will put the motion since you've given that reason. Point of order, councillor Cassidy.
Councillor Strunk has three minutes to establish, in his words, why he thinks this motion should be debated.
Just one moment, Deputy Mayor. Councillor Cassidy, please continue.
Then it's up to the chamber to determine whether he has established that or not. It's not up to you as the Chair or to the Deputy Mayor to be rising on points of order every 15 seconds to establish that. Collectively, we get to do that at the end of whatever councillor Strunk has to say.
Thank you, councillor Cassidy. And I did ask councillor Strunk for his reason and he said he had done that. I asked the question and councillor Strunk replied, I had given the answer. He had established why it was not on the papers. So I'm quite happy now to put the reason for councillor Strunk not having the motion on the papers before Monday. Sorry, councillor Strunk, would you like to remind us why you couldn't get that motion on the papers before one o'clock yesterday?
Yes, certainly, Chair. It was the case that on Monday afternoon, actually, late Monday morning, early afternoon, I received three phone calls, separate calls from members of my constituency, seniors, who were worried about the cuts.
Thank you. Okay, so we will now put the motion. All those in favour of.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Massey.
I'm not sure that, from my understanding, like, there's three minutes and it sounds like the councillor Strunk is still going about why the urgency motion hasn't been put on. And so maybe we should check that and let councillor Strunk continue with these three minutes before the vote.
Councillor Massey. Under section 12.3a, a councillor opposing or suspending standing rules by way of motion must establish to the satisfaction of the council the appropriate reasons for not meeting the requirements under section 9.3 and may, does not have to, may speak for three minutes in doing so. Just one moment, councillors. I asked councillor Strunk twice to establish his reason. He gave it. We are now going to put the motion. Yes, councillor Johnston.
Yes. Mr Chair, I am interested in the reasons for doing this. I don't know anything about this motion. As I am one of the councillors who needs to understand, I think councillor Strunk is simply being polite in response to you. I feel councillor Strunk has more to say about why this motion should be on the agenda and I would appreciate it if we could hear him and make sure he has completed within the three minutes to establish his reasons for putting the motion forward.
Councillor Strunk has been given two opportunities to establish. Councillor Johnston. Councillor Strunk has been given the opportunity twice and has given the same reason twice. We are now going to put the motion.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order.
I ask you as Chair of this chamber to actually go and review some definitions behind the word "may" in the meetings local law, because as you've read it, it does say that the notice falls onto the councillor.
Councillor Whitme, I don't uphold your point of order. Councillor Strunk, you are going to rise on a point of order?
Yes, Mr Chair. Out of fairness, this is the first time in my memory of being in this chamber in regards to moving a motion that I was only given, or anyone was given for that matter, a very insufficient amount of time to make the motion as to why it needed to be brought to the chamber today.
Thank you, councillor Strunk. I believe I checked twice with you and in both cases you gave the same reason.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor Strunk.
Yes, but you didn't allow me to finish. You cut me off basically.
Councillor Strunk, the reason, yes, thank you. And while I'm speaking, you turn your mic off and sit down, please. You were moving into the substantive motion. You weren't addressing the reason why you want to suspend standing orders for this meeting.
Point of order, Chair.
Yes.
Because, Chair, I wasn't given the opportunity to establish, right? It was just an opening statement without any context behind it and then you summarily cut me off.
Councillor Strunk, the reason is why you want standing orders suspended. On two occasions, you gave the reason as you had been contacted by your residents. Councillor Johnston. You were then going to move into the motion that you would like to put if we were suspending standing orders, which we have not. Let's vote on whether we can suspend the standing orders and then you can put your motion if your reasons satisfy the council. That's how it works.
Point of order.
Councillor Johnston.
As you are guillotining the debate, I move dissent in your ruling. You're essentially guillotining this motion. So I move dissent in your ruling.
Seconded.
We have a motion of dissent in my ruling. Thank you, councillor Johnson. Moved by councillor Johnson and seconded by councillor Massey. All those, sorry, my apologies, councillor Cassidy. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
All those against say no.
No.
The noes have it.
Do my division?
Councillor Murphy. We will now put the motion for suspending standing orders. All those in favour say aye. Those against say no.
No.
The noes have it.
Division. Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Strunk. Ayes to my right and noes to my left. Please ring the bells. Sorry, mate. Councillors, quiet in the division, please. Clerks, please read the result.
Mr Chair, the noes have it. The voting being five in favour and nineteen against.
The motion has failed. Lord Mayor, Establishment and Coordination Committee, please.
Mr Chair, I move that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday, 23rd of October 2023, be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by the Deputy Mayor that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday, the 23rd of October 2023, be adopted. Lord Mayor.
Point of order.
Give me one second. I think I'm going to go with ladies first. Sorry, councillor Cassidy. Councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair. We were both at exactly the same time. Mr Chair, I'm seeking the further following information with respect to item A, the Holland Park Sports and Community Club item. Can the Lord Mayor please advise how many trees will be demolished to establish the pool to be built? And will entry pricing for the pool be limited to the caps set by council through councils' leased pools?
Thank you, councillor Johnston. Councillor Cassidy, your point of order.
Yeah, thanks very much, Chair. Chair, I move suspension of standing orders to enable me to move a motion.
Seconded.
It has been, oh, sorry, we've got a suspension of standing orders from councillor Cassidy, seconded by councillor Whitme. Thank you, councillor Cassidy. Three minutes, please.
Thanks very much, Chair. The motion of which I would like to debate right now is that the Lord Mayor immediately release the list of services and projects being cut that puts Brisbane's climate resilience under threat. We're living in a climate crisis right now. We need to build our climate resilient cities. We head into Brisbane 2032 and beyond.
Thank you, councillor Cassidy.
People are facing floods, fires, hotter suburbs and less access to public and.
Councillor Cassidy, it's to urgency, not the substantive motion. Sorry, to why it couldn't be put on the papers on Monday. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Chair. So we're facing a budget disaster that was created by this LMP administration and we're going to have the worst effects of climate change because of these cuts. We asked this question of councillor Davis, the Lord Mayor's handpicked LMP Chair of this committee during question time today, just an hour ago.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
We asked this question and it couldn't be answered.
Just one moment, councillor Cassidy. Deputy Mayor.
I will sit down and maybe he's about to use councillor Davis as his excuse.
Not an appropriate point of order.
Point of order.
Point of order, Deputy Mayor.
I will do my point of order then. Relevance to why this couldn't be put on the papers by one o'clock yesterday?
Thank you. I'm assuming councillor Cassidy is going to give us that information very soon. Councillor Cassidy?
Are we, sorry, are you going to deal with that inappropriate point of order?
That was, it was just, it was a throwaway one. Can you please address?
So we can make some throwaway ones if you.
Councillor Cassidy!
How ridiculous.
Councillor Cassidy.
So councillors can make.
Councillor Cassidy!
No, that's not in a.
Councillor Cassidy, if you're going to address other councillors, do it through the Chair. Everyone is on this level playing field in this place. The Deputy Mayor withdrew the first one. The second one was on relevance. Councillor Johnson. I know you're not, but you are on two verbal warnings. You've been calling out across the chamber. Councillor Cassidy, three minutes as to why we're suspending standing orders.
Thanks very much, Chair. We're calling on the Lord Mayor to do this today because his Chair of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee would not come clean during question time. That's why we should debate this now. How will these budget cuts affect Brisbane's climate resilience going forward?
Thank you. We will now put the motion. All those in favour say aye. Those against say no. The noes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Whitme. Ayes to my right and noes to my left. Councillors, quiet in the division, please. Clerks, please read the results.
Mr Chair, the noes have it. The voting being five in favour and twenty against.
The motion to suspend standing orders has been lost. Councillors, please resume your seat. Lord Mayor, Establishment and Coordination Committee, report, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I'm not sure if I got to moving this or not. I did move it? Yep. We did?
Yes, the Deputy Mayor has seconded it. Yes, it is moved. Thank you.
Okay, before I move on to talk about the submissions, I just wanted to raise a couple of issues. First of all, the councillor who resigned from the Environment and Parks Committee is now suddenly interested in environment and parks and sustainability, which is quite fascinating because certainly never expressed an interest until now. What I can say is that theoretically, if we were to reduce our investment and our focus on environment, parks and sustainability by, say, 10%, it'd still be 90% more than what Labor ever did. Actually, it'd be 100% more than what Labor ever did. Because our record is not only clear, but our record has been endorsed by the United Nations, among others, among others. And our investment will continue. Our focus will continue. And of course, we will work to find sensible savings, but the results will be delivered on the ground. That is the reality. And we know that projects like our recent partnership with Green Australia, we'll see now 1.5 million plants and trees planted between now and the 2032 Olympics. And that will continue on and we will meet those targets. And one of the great things about that is that we will leverage our investment with investment from private donors and companies. Now, I know that the Labor-Greens Coalition of Chaos thinks that corporations are a dirty word. They hate business with a passion. They hate business. They want to punish and tax business more. But we are, well, councillor Massey just said she was proud about that. It is quite disturbing.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor Massey.
Not what I said.
Sorry, I.
Misrepresentation.
You haven't spoken.
Oh, is it just a throwaway? I said that I actually, I said, why are you proud of that, of being beholden to corporations? That's my throwaway.
Councillor Massey.
Withdrawn.
Councillor Massey, thank you. I don't uphold your point of order and I will remind you that calling out across the chamber, rather than standing and raising a proper point of order and speaking through the Chair to other councillors, can end you up with mistaken words. Councillor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr Chair. So could you just clarify for everybody then what the difference between councillor Adams' throwaway was and councillor Trina's throwaway? And why councillor Adams wasn't reprimanded for not following the meetings local law, but councillor Massey was? I'd like to understand the difference.
Certainly, councillor Johnson. Councillor Massey called out across the chamber. The Deputy Mayor rose on a point of order. The first point of order was, councillor Johnson and councillor Massey, you asked me for a ruling, I'm giving it. The Deputy Mayor rose on the first point of order, withdrew it. The second point of order was not acted on because it was not a point of order. Now, to address the term throwaway, I used the wrong words and I apologise to the chamber for that. Are you satisfied with my ruling, councillor Johnson?
I would like a moment to think about that, Mr Chair. Thank you.
That's fine. I'm happy to give that to you. Where was I? Deputy Mayor, sorry, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. We've heard councillor Massey talk about corporate donations and beholden to corporations and this is coming from a councillor that represents a party that received the largest corporate donation in Australian political history. A corporate donation which they never paid back, which they pocketed and which came. which they pocketed, and which came from a company associated with burning huge amounts of emissions in people travelling around the world, fossil fuel emissions. The hypocrisy boggles the mind. And we know that the Australian Greens funnel money to the Queensland Greens, and we have no idea where it's come from, which corporations have donated. We know they've been caught out in the past receiving corporate donations, the largest one in Australian political history. We've also known that they receive donations from professional gamblers. They had no problem with that. On the one hand, they tell people they oppose the pokies, yet they're happy to take a massive donation from professional gamblers. Now, councillor Massey raised this issue. She interjected on this, and now she's left the chamber. I'm not surprised. I'm not surprised.
Councillor Strunk.
The point I was making is that there are so many companies who want to support our environmental and sustainability work. They want to support and boost the work that we are doing and have done. We are very proud that we planted 2 million trees in a four-year period. No one has ever done anything like that in any council of Australia in comparison, and that's not enough. 2 million trees wasn't enough. We're doing another 1.5 million plants and trees between now and the Olympics. And so, our commitment, and that is just one example, goes deep, it goes far, it goes wide, and it will continue. It will continue, and it will continue where it matters, which is where the results are delivered. Now, councillor Cassidy resigned from the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee because he wasn't interested in the issue, and now he's suddenly saying that he's interested. We know the truth. We know the truth. We know that these, this more political posturing, point scoring and game playing from councillor Cassidy and the Labour Green Coalition of Chaos, sorry, the Green Labour Coalition of Chaos. And we know that when he talks about, you know, his opposition to our sensible spending reductions, that the Treasurer, who is his factional leader from the AWU faction, announced just a short time ago that he would do exactly the same thing as what we have announced. Reductions in consultancy, reductions in agency staff, reductions in advertising, catering, travel, those things. All of the things that it's okay for Treasurer Cameron Dick to announce, $3 billion worth of savings. We didn't hear a peep out of councillor Cassidy then. He wasn't fighting for the workers then. He said, nothing to see here, perfectly fine, all good, yet he is trying to scare people unnecessarily at this time. Why? Because he is only focused on politics. He is quite happy to create a trail of destruction, a trail of concern, by not focusing on the facts, despite the fact that we have repeatedly confirmed no permanent council staff will be impacted. We have said that repeatedly. We've repeated again that we are currently reviewing expenditure to make sensible savings. Yet councillor Cassidy and the Green Labour Coalition of Chaos continue to oppose those sensible savings. And when they oppose sensible savings, what they say is they want to force rates up. That's what they're saying. They're quite happy for rates to go up. Now, our record is very clear. For two years in a row, we have had rate increases significantly less than inflation, which means in real terms, rates are going down, and half the rate of inflation this financial year. That is our record, and we retain the lowest residential rates in South East Queensland, and we are determined to keep it that way. Labour's recklessness, the Greens' recklessness, which involves higher taxes, tax anything that moves, and in a housing crisis, new big taxes for housing. We also see unfunded commitments, like their $100 million footpath commitment, no explanation on how they're going to pay for it, and like the Green Labour Coalition of Chaos planned to purchase Eagle Farm Racecourse. Now, does anyone guess what it would cost to purchase the Eagle Farm Racecourse? Now, their, their Lord Merrill candidate said, oh, look, the, the land is valued at $35 million. Okay, that's, that's the unimproved base value. That is not the market value. There is a difference between the two. We are talking north of $100 million, $150 million, probably north of that. Where's the money coming from? Where's the money coming from? I can tell you where the money would come from. Under a Green Labour Coalition of Chaos, ratepayers would have to pay more for all of those profligate commitments unfunded that they make, promising everything to everyone. People know, they'll get the bill in the mail later from the Labour Green Coalition of Chaos, sorry, the Green Labour Coalition of Chaos. They will get the bill. And people are awake. They're awake to this. Because people themselves, in their homes and in their businesses, have had to make sensible savings themselves. They've had to make them. They've cut back on things. They've reduced expenditure, and they certainly, I know that they certainly know that they're paying the lowest rates in South East Queensland, and we want to keep it that way. Now, while it's okay for the state government up the road, the Labour state government, to make $3 billion in sensible savings, they are resisted vigorously at this level, and the ratepayers know what that means. The people of Brisbane know what that means. It is disappointing, but it is not surprising. I would also say that councillor Trina Massey asked me a question. We know that she opposes casual workers. She doesn't like that form of employment. We've heard the Labour, sorry, the Green Labour Coalition of Chaos, we, we know who's in top in that relationship. The Green Labour Coalition of Chaos consistently opposes, consistently opposes casual workers, contract workers. They believe everyone should be permanent, regardless of whether there's any work for anyone to do. But at the moment, we see councillor Massey advertising for a contractor in her ward office, a contract spin doctor, would you believe? And, and I, I will use—
Councillor Massey, just one moment, Lord Mayor.
I don't have the time for that sort of stuff, but—
Lord Mayor, just one moment, please. Councillor Massey, I consider you are displaying unsuitable meeting conduct, and in accordance with section 21/4 of the Meetings Local Law 2001, I hereby request you refrain from calling across the chamber. Lord Mayor, you've got the call.
Councillor Massey gets very excited, and I know about her social media. If that's your claim to fame, own it. Look, on, on the job ad advertisement put up by councillor Massey, it's for a media and communications officer, aka spin doctor, and it says here, "You will be engaged as a private contractor and required to invoice the GAB award for services provided. As a contractor, you won't have access to paid sick and annual leave or superannuation." Wow, wow. Anyone see the hypocrisy here? The sheer hypocrisy. They're all for the workers, except for when they employ them themselves in their own office. And so, we see that kind of hypocrisy repeated again and again and again by the Green Labour Coalition of Chaos.
Your time has expired.
Move for extension.
Seconded.
We have a move for a further extension, moved by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Hutton. All those in favour say aye. All those against say no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Moving forward, I wanted to talk about bushfire preparedness. Our efforts continue on, as they have been in earnest all year. And right from the first opportunity this year, we've been making preparations to ensure that Brisbane is as prepared as possible for whatever the season may offer. We've seen with great concern what's happening around the state and around the country when it comes to bushfires. And so, we have this year conducted and covered more area in controlled burns than at any time in the last 13 years. And the only reason I can tell you it's at least 13 years is because I'm still asking for the records beyond 13 years. It's quite possible that it's even longer than that as well. But in the 13 years of records that I was provided, we, we have covered more area with our controlled burn programme than at any time in the last 13 years. The vegetation management work continues in earnest. Obviously, the weather conditions aren't right to do any more controlled burning. It is too dangerous to do controlled burning at this point in time, but we're doing vegetation management and control. And so, just last week, 21.4 hectares of vegetation management was done in Tuie Forest, White's Hill Reserve, Archerfield Wetlands, Manly Road Park, the Glider Forest, Sergeant Dan Stiller Memorial Reserve. There was also 4.3 kilometres of track and trail maintenance done in places like the Colo Bushland Reserve and the Prouse Road Park in Burbank. And the week ahead, we're continuing to maintain the fire breaks right across the city, and there'll also be at least 15 hectares of vegetation management underway in White's Hill Reserve, Caraby Bushlands, Parkinson Bushlands, Archerfield Wetlands, and also another 4.5 kilometres of track and trail maintenance in Colo Bushland and Prouse Road Park as well. And so, we're getting on with it. We're continuing to do what we must do and should do. We're continuing to engage with other agencies to make sure we are as ready as possible. I did want to refer also quickly to the lighting of the assets, as I always do. Last night, the Victoria Bridge, Story Bridge and Ratacliff Place was lit in teal for Sexual Violence Awareness Month. It's held annually during October to raise awareness about sexual violence, promote services available and upholds a clear message that sexual violence is not tolerated in our community. Tonight, the Victoria Bridge, Story Bridge and Ratacliff Place will be lit up in red to support the Lady Bird Care Foundation. The foundation supports bereaved parents suffering the loss of a child and delivers valuable work right across the country in the most difficult of times for a parent. On Friday night, the Story Bridge and Victoria Bridge will be lit up in white, orange and green for— does anyone guess? White, orange and green? Yes, councillor Adaman, you're on the ball. The colours of the Indian flag for Diwali, the Diwali festival. So, this will light up in conjunction with the start of Diwali celebrations in many parts of the city. On Saturday and Sunday, the Story Bridge will be lit up, and Victoria Bridge will be lit up in green to support Lung Cancer Awareness Month. And that is it for the bridge lighting up. Items in front of us, number A or item A is a new lease for the Holland Park Sports and Community Club. To answer the questions that were asked, I'm not aware of any trees that will be impacted. There will be some minor shrubbery impacted, from what I understand. And in terms of the cost of entry into the facility, that is not managed by council. It's a lease arrangement with a, a separate operator. We do not regulate the prices that will be charged. And so, this particular item seeks approval for a new 30-year lease at 49 Abbotsley Street, Holland Park. The club has called their current site home for many decades and have entered into negotiations with Aquatic Achievers for the construction of an indoor swimming school on the club's North East Bowling Green. To accommodate this, the club have requested that council grant a new lease over their existing lease area and permit the club to enter a sublease with Aquatic Achievers over the North East and Bowling Green. The proposed arrangement would see a number of benefits to the provider, not only to the club, but also to residents, including the construction of a new premium purpose-built aquatic centre, fully funded by Aquatic Achievers at an estimated construction cost of $7.5 million. Aquatic Achievers will pay for the maintenance and operational cost of the aquatic centres, estimated to be up to $150,000 per annum. And the club will receive a commencement rent of $100,000 per annum plus GST and outgoings as part of the proposed sublease. So, there's a new facility that the community will be able to use. The club benefits from a new income source of $100,000 at least, and also we'll see around 40 jobs created in operating the facility as well. We've seen other successful examples of this leasing model across our city, most notably with the Northern Suburbs Bowls Club, who entered into a similar arrangement with Aquatic Achievers for the construction of a similar facility in Waver Heights. I commend this to the chamber as a good opportunity for the people of Brisbane and also for a community club. Item B is a minor administrative amendment to the city plan, package P. This relates specifically to the voluntary home buyback programme, which we're operating in, in conjunction with the state government and the Queensland Reconstruction Authority. So far, 186 properties have, have been identified within this package, and we're rezoning them in this package to open space. So, effectively goes from a residential zoning to an open space zoning to reflect that the future of that site is green space, and this is adjusting the plan accordingly. This also makes it, it gives that extra protection that nothing will be built on the site in the future. We certainly have no intention of building anything other than things related to open space, but this helps by rezoning the site from residential. We don't, we don't intend to place any significant infrastructure back into these sites, given that they are flood-prone and drainage locations, but they may be appropriate for some activation as parks in some cases, and we'll have a look at that on a case-by-case basis. Item C is the Significant Contracting Plan for Road Pavement Marking Services. Obviously, it's something that council continues to do on an ongoing basis, and includes not only the painting of new line marking and coloured pavement markings, but also the removal of old and faded treatments and their replacement. This SCP is used to supplement internal resources when required. The current arrangement will end in July next year, and so we're seeking approval to commence market engagement with this particular SCP. Current panel of contractors will expire July 2024, and we're aiming to have the new contract finalised before that time. Item D is the SCP or Significant Contracting Plan for Tires and Retreading. This is something that we use particularly on our bus fleet. We have over 1,200 buses in the fleet. Also, there's other trucks and vehicles that we operate as well, including street sweepers. And this, this allows us to continue to do what we've been doing for many years, and we have a contract in place that's due to expire on, in September next year. And the approval of this item today will allow us to commence the market engagement to enter into a new contract. As part of this SCP, we'll enter into a three-year contract with options to extend for a maximum of five years. Item E is the SCP for Tree Maintenance and Planting Services. The SCP is seeking council approval to start a market engagement across five different categories. And the current contract arrangement is due to expire in September next year. Once again, we're moving to start a new arrangement through a market-based process. Council has internal delivery teams that undertake tree maintenance, and this provides a supplementary resources during times of peak demand. Obviously, this is something that goes in cycles, with tree growth considerably increasing during the summer months and when it's wet, but also slowing down substantially in the winter months and the cooler months. And so, obviously, it's a cyclical arrangement. We have resources in place, but we supplement them with additional resources based on an as, as need basis. So, we're proposing to go out to Tinder for both commercial operators and social enterprises to make sure we have the range of services that our community needs. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Councillor Cassidy.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I rise to speak on all of these items before us today, and just ask that C— we'll just get that. C, D and E be taken serial item as a group, and A and B as a group for voting.
Just give me one moment, I'll repeat that. So, we have C, D and E taken for voting as one group, and A and B taken for voting as a separate group.
Yes, thanks.
Thank you, noted.
Yeah, thanks very much, Chair. I'll speak on all these items, and just sort of start by making an observation about something we've just learnt about the Lord Mayor today. It's probably something that we already knew, I guess, but just the way in which the Lord Mayor will say one thing but then do something else in a well-crafted way, put a statement out or, or make some comments about something, but then in reality, we find out what his true values are and what he really thinks about things. Earlier, laughing, laughing about job losses was one of those. Laughing out loud about job losses, and then—
Deputy Mayor, sorry, councillor Cassidy, just one moment. Lord Mayor.
Claimed to be misrepresented.
Noted, thank you.
Thanks, Chair. And then laughing about our city being climate resilient, and the LMP all laughing about that.
Just one moment again, councillor Cassidy. Lord Mayor.
Again, claimed to be misrepresented?
Noted.
And then saying he had prepared this city and all our suburbs for bushfire season, but forgot to mention that council's permit for hazard reduction burning ran out in August, and they never bothered to renew it. So, I guess that's actually the real reason why we didn't see any hazard reduction burning beyond August. beyond August. I'll be meeting with some council workers tomorrow and my message to any that happen to be listening here today, we value your jobs, whether you're a casual, whether you're a permanent part-timer, whether you're a fixed-time contractor.
Just one moment, just one moment please, Councillor Cassidy. Deputy Mayor, thank you. Do not call out across the chamber. Councillor Cassidy, you've got the call.
Thanks very much Chair. So over 700 casuals in council and over 1,000 fixed-term contract employees in council. We won't laugh about cutting your jobs as Labour, unlike the LMP do. When it comes to the lease of the Holland Park Sports and Community Club item, we'll be supporting this and I want to congratulate this sports club. I'm looking at ways in which they can secure their future and deliver things that the community wants. Imagine, just imagine if we had, for a moment, imagine if you can, that we had a council that was actually proactive in working with clubs to find these sorts of solutions, to diversify what they offer to the community instead of a piecemeal approach and responding only when it's too late for that club. This outcome today is in stark contrast to the backdoor deal we saw over at Stafford Bowls Club, which is now sadly a demolition site. Councillor Hammond sat by while the Stafford Bowls Club dwindled away for years and years and years, doing absolutely nothing, and sat idly by while that site was passed around amongst a few big cashed-up organisations, until today it's been reduced to a pile of rubble. This outcome is of course much better than that. We've got an outcome at the Sangay Bowls Club for context, which will see bowls continue as a sport and that club opened up to the community. Improvements will be made, no pokies there. I applaud council officers who have worked on this one and on the Sangay Bowls Club, lease changes and transfers as well, but you get an understanding after working very closely with those council staff who do an amazing job. I can tell their enthusiasm to be finding solutions is not matched by this LMP administration. There's no high-level strategy, there's no funding behind making these community sites the very best they can be for the community. Rather, it's left to a bunch of volunteers to sort of find their way through the mess. And that's not a very good way of running community leases. Community clubs are really the lifeblood of our suburbs and they should receive much more support from council than they receive now. If this new approach here means the doors stay open and there's a facility and amenities for the community, then we are all for that. On item B, the Minor Administrative Amendments, these are of course about zoning changes to premises that have been part of the voluntary buyback scheme that are no longer homes. There are some changes around certification of flood studies, updates to references and terminologies and changes made as a result to the Queensland urban drainage model. We know that the Lord Mayor and the LMP council's response to the 2022 floods was dismal. Certainly hope that these changes allow for better planning outcomes in disaster responses under a future Labor administration, but-
Lord Mayor, no calling out across the chamber.
So I've now got that at-
Councillor Cassidy, you've got the call.
Yeah, thanks very much Chair. Five, 10, 15, 20, 25, 26, 27 times, the Lord Mayor's mentioned the Greens Party or the Labor Party. He doesn't much mention his own political party, does he? He doesn't much, he doesn't like to talk about the LMP much, because he's running from that brand. He is running from brand, LMP, I can tell you that. He sounds very worried and they all sound a little uneasy over there, don't they? Yeah, the wind of change are coming, absolutely.
Councillor Cassidy, can I draw you back to the report, please?
Thanks very much Chair.
My pleasure.
So when we see, you know, around the certification of flood studies, we'd actually want to see more flood studies done as well. It's one thing to make an administrative, minor administrative amendment to include flood studies that were done, but you know, my community where the Lord Mayor promised in the months following the February 2022 flood, a updated flood study for the Brighton Creek Catchment, it's just radio silence. Now, apparently some work's been done, but it's like drawing blood from a stone to try and find what study has actually been done in the Brighton Creek Catchment. Doesn't matter whether you write to the council officer that was in charge of it, who's now left council, you write to the CEO of council, you write to the Lord Mayor, you can't seem to find anything out. And I suspect, you know, we do know that they've been cutting things a long time before. The cuts were announced a few weeks ago, and I suspect these creek flood studies, which should be included in here and updated, have been cut along the way as well in the wake of the February 2022 flood disaster. So that's certainly really bad news for the suburbs of Brisbane and will continue to be bad news while this LMP administration continues down their line of cuts and chaos. And we see that in the suburbs right across Brisbane. Moving on to these three stores board submissions, Chair. So we're currently at day 14, day 14 of the Lord Mayor's cuts and chaos in the council budget. So that's $22.4 million that the Lord Mayor has cut from council projects and council services in the suburbs of Brisbane. He certainly won't tell us where those cuts are falling and who he's going to sack. We know, we've spoken to council employees who were called the day after those budget cuts were announced, and when they asked why, the reason given was budget cuts for those council employees to have been sacked. So it does seem a little odd, in the process, which I'll get to shortly, which the administration's going through here with these contracting plans, that they're talking about these contracting plans and we don't even know whether they'll be delivered. Because we've seen so many major changes to contracting plans come through council, we're not sure that this administration can afford to go into a new one. We know rates are at record highs under the LMP, highest they've ever been in Brisbane. They've more than doubled on the LMP's watch, but they still can't pay for basics. They still can't just do the basics. For the first one, clause C, it's for line marking. So council does line marking through asphalt and aggregates line marking team. Here's a novel idea, maybe just do some more of that in-house. Bring those workers back in-house and you won't have to slash those contracts and amend those contracts all the time. So the fixation on contracting out of services is out of control under this chaotic LMP administration. And with $400 million in cuts to find over the next couple of months, who can say whether any of these contracting plans that we're discussing today will actually come to fruition? Because the start date of the contracts is next financial year and the request for proposal looks to be delayed as well. When you look at a contracting plan that came through this place over the last few years, you'd see the date for request for proposal would be next week, might be tomorrow in an ordinary case. This has been delayed by months. I think in some of these, it's next year. So there's a bit of a risk profile there too, but obviously, obviously as we have come to expect with this, you know, administration of cuts and chaos under the LMP, that the biggest risk to procurement now in Brisbane is Lord Mayor Adrian Shrinna and his incompetence when it comes to budgeting and when it comes to project management. When we look at the contracting plan for tyres and retreading, we've stumbled on another metro mistake. This is another metro blowout, because you look at the expensive imported tyres for these expensive imported buses. So the tyres for the expensive overseas-made buses for the metro are 10% of the contract, but the metro buses are only 4% of the fleet. So the fancy tyres for the fancy buses are blowing out the budget on this contracting plan as well. We understand that buses and vehicles need new tyres, sure, but the Lord Mayor and councillor Murphy have been obviously keeping this part of the contract blowout a secret for some time.
Councillor Cassidy, your time has expired.
Move for extension.
Second. We have a motion for extension moved by councillor Whitby, seconded by councillor Strunk. All those in favour say aye. Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Cassidy, you've got the call.
Thanks Chair. So maybe they're Swiss tyres. We know that they're Swiss-made buses that they've brought in, perhaps they're Swiss-made tyres. We know the buses that are made here in Australia at Eagle Farm in Brisbane in partnership with the Ratepayers of Brisbane use normal tyres and they cost a normal amount. And what we know from this contracting plan is that these fancy overseas-made buses, just 60 of them, that are making up 4% of Brisbane's bus fleet, when if they all come online in the next couple of years, we imagine, is the plan, although that blows out by a year, yeah, every now and again, but they're going to be 10% of the entire requirement for council's tyres. Absolutely, absolutely incredible. And that's even more incredible when you think about the number of cars, utes, light trucks, trucks that council operates as well. The fact that metro tyres are going to be 10% of this entire budget. Maybe if the Lord Mayor had just got these buses made here in Brisbane, there's a 10% saving. Hey, he's looking for 10% savings here, there and everywhere. Perhaps if he just supported local jobs, local workers.
Sorry, Jared. Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor Whitby.
Yeah, I just ask you to make the same ruling on the Lord Mayor, the Deputy Mayor and councillor Murphy and take their conversation out of the hallway, same as you asked councillor Cassidy earlier this morning, this afternoon, sorry.
Don't uphold your point of order. You just finished calling out across the chamber the councillor Cassidy in support of his speaking, so. I know, I realise that, two metres, the sound goes quite far. Councillor Cassidy, you've got the call.
Okay, so the LMP can interject, they can have conversations, but Labor, the independent councillor and the Greens councillor can't. I'm perfectly clear now, thank you very much.
I'm glad you've seen the light, councillor Cassidy. Please continue.
No need to be rude. So I guess, I guess when you start adding these things up, when you add up the blowout and the construction of the metro depot, when you add up the delays and the cost blowouts to the vehicles over in Switzerland, when you add up the delays and the cost blowouts to the 200 metres a tunnel, when you look at the major changes along the way of the metro contract, and then you look at, this is just one small element, the massive increase in the tyre costs, you do then understand what's gone wrong in the budget. And it's not by, it isn't by accident, not giving the LMP a free leave pass of here of course, because every single one of those decisions were the LMP's decisions. So whether they, whether they knew that their decision's going to lead to these cost blowouts and this inflationary pressure in the council budget and higher rates for residents and less services, whether they knew it or not, it's still a bad thing. Because they're either, they're either keeping it hidden from the people of Brisbane or they're totally incompetent. It's one of the two, one of the two. Clause E, Chair, is for tree maintenance and planting services. The papers here tell us that about half of council street and park tree maintenance is done internally, obviously to a great standard. The LMP obviously think that council workers who do this work is of a good standard, and yet they still contract out 50% of this work, and it's clearly ongoing, because the LMP have put a dollar figure on this, the exact amount of work they expect to be occurring. At least, you know, Graham Quirk, I remember when Graham Quirk used to get up and say, oh, well, they'd only contract things out or employ labor hire staff and whatnot, when there was some uncertainty around whether that work could be ongoing or not. At least they pretended back then. They at least, he at least tried. But the LMP of today, they just fall frontal when it comes to contracting out, because they, their modus operandi around this is to having more direct control over workers, more workers outside of an EBA, more workers that can be sacked, more contracts that can be terminated. That's the LMP way. That's what they're all about. So we know exactly, we know exactly how much tree work is going to be required in this contract, and we know that 50% of that work is being done in-house. Used to be 100% until the LMP continued to contract these things out. So maybe, maybe give people secure work. This is ongoing work. Apparently the LMP is going to pay for it. It can't be, it can't possibly be cheaper than in-house labour. You couldn't imagine the LMP would sign up to a contract that would have lower wages, more inferior conditions, surely. Surely not, you would assume not. And with, with laws coming in place that will ensure same job, same pay, the economic rationale about contracting out doesn't stack up, but the values rationale for the LMP does. They want to contract out because they want to control workers. That's the only logical conclusion you can draw from the LMP's addiction to contracting out. So if we had more council staff to be able to respond to tree issues more directly and they could be deployed across the city as needed instead of a 90-day KPI and having a whole level of management within council that has to be there to manage external contracts, to go and look at a tree, to then allocate some work to an external contractor who then has to assess that work and then sub that out to somebody else, that is just absolutely ridiculous. But we then get a sense of how easy it is for the LMP to cut basic projects and services in the suburbs. All these basics are contracted out, so when the LMP, when this Lord Mayor wants to cut $1.6 million a day, it's very easy for him, isn't it? And that's, you know, why he says he doesn't mind cutting staff and he doesn't care about cutting casual staff and he doesn't care about cutting contract staff, because they're not directly employed. It's just an easy thing to do, isn't it, for this LMP Lord Mayor? Well, Brisbane deserves much, much better than four more years of bad decisions by this LMP administration. They deserve better than four more years of financial mismanagement under this chaotic LMP administration. And if this Lord Mayor and this LMP administration of cuts and chaos is to continue, we can imagine there's no point in even having discussed these contracts today, because they'll simply cut them, because they won't be entered into, they're certainly not going to be entered into today or requests aren't going to be issued tomorrow. We know that a budget review's coming to this chamber in two weeks' time, which is going to slash $400 million in expenditure from things like asphalt and aggregates, tree trimming that we're discussing today and jobs. We know more jobs are going to be cut in this LMP administration. So it does seem, does seem a little surreal that the organisation of council are progressing these contracts through the system, the LMP administration are making decisions to cut projects in the suburbs and basic council services. At some point, they're going to have to come together and we're going to be seeing cuts to these services and they're going to be deep cuts and they're going to be coming in the next couple of weeks. And I just feel sorry for all the council officers that had to spend so much time putting these requests for proposals together, probably knowing that they're not going to go ahead anyway or they're going to have to be fundamentally changed because of this Lord Mayor's financial mismanagement. And Brisbane deserves much, much better than that, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Cassidy. Lord Mayor, your two points of misrepresentation.
Yes, councillor Cassidy made a claim that I was laughing about certain things, completely false. I was laughing about the incompetence of the Green Labour Coalition of Chaos, who interrupted councillor Cunningham continually and then was concerned that she ran out of time to answer the question.
Sorry, Lord Mayor, there was two, there was both?
That applies to both.
Sorry, thank you. Further speakers on the ENC report, councillor Murphy.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak briefly on item D, the Significant Contracting Plan for Tyres and Retreading. And as the Lord Mayor mentioned, our current arrangement for tyres is due to end in September 2024. This contract is critical for our operational requirements, not just in transport for Brisbane, but also within fleet services inside-city standards. We want to make sure that we have plenty of time to complete market sounding and finalise the new contract before the existing arrangement concludes. Now, in transport for Brisbane, we have 1,266 buses, which complete a combined 70 million kilometres in service each and every year. A new bus tyre has a range of around 90,000 kilometres, Chair. So you can imagine that this means that we require a significant number of new tyres each year, some 3,000 or 4,000 in fact, so quite a lot of tyres. It's important that this SCP is not only for the purchase of new tyres, but also for maintenance, allows us to reuse tyres by retreading them. Across the TFB fleet, we're usually able to safely retread a tyre two or three times. And obviously by retreading where possible, we're able to significantly reduce the waste that we either send to landfill or that we, you know, do in fact end up recycling. But it's important though, with tyres, you can't always recycle 100% of the product. So it's important that we get as much use out of those tyres as possible. Speaking of use out of tyres, Chair, councillor Cassidy had some retreading that he did himself in his speech, where he said the same tired old talking points that he's said in this chamber for many, many months now. One of the classics, actually, we've only seen this one recently, Chair, which was that rates have never, they're the highest they've ever been. I don't really know where this one has come from, but I mean, I challenge you to find a council in the country where, you know, rates are lower today than they were 10 years ago. It's just a function, it's one way that councils raise money. Rates tend to go up every year as the cost of living goes up, as the price of everything goes up. So I mean, like, truly, we would be one of the very few, in fact, where actually rate rises have been under inflation and so in a real sense, we've actually gone backwards in this city, but he doesn't even thank us for that or acknowledge that that's even happened. He says the rates are the highest they've ever been. Well, duh, like, I mean, talk to the local government association in Queensland, they'll tell you, that's just- that's just a function of the reality that councils are in. So I don't think that's a really good point. And, you know, I do think, Chair, the big worry is that with four meetings to go, we're still yet to see any major policies from the leader of the opposition. And what we did see, though, today was a big theory around Swiss-made tyres. And I can categorically say, Chair, that the tyres, you know, they will be made here. And in fact, that's in the documents, you can read the documents. It's two Australian suppliers, Brisbane-based suppliers that will be supplying new tyres and retreaded tyres. So, but he did have that big conspiracy theory around the Brisbane Metro vehicle. And I'm happy to reveal why the Brisbane Metro vehicle tyres cost more, Chair. And I feel a little bit like a preschool teacher saying the wheels on the bus go round and round. But the Brisbane Metro has, it has 12 tyres. A normal bus has sometimes four, sometimes six tyres. So the Brisbane Metro has 12 tyres, that's double the amount of tyres that a normal bus has. And it also carries triple the amount of people that a normal bus can. So if big bus is really big and tyres on bus same size, they will wear out earlier. And don't forget, Metro runs 24/7 turn-up-and-go service, so these things are going around constantly. So I can assure you, councillor Cassidy, there is no conspiracy theory here. The Metro, the Metro will use more tyres because it is bigger, it has more tyres. And I am, I am, quite frankly, councillor Cassidy, astounded. This is a project that's been around since 2016, it's now 2023, and you guys still don't have the basic details about how many tyres are on the Brisbane Metro.
Just one moment, just before you get up on your point of order, councillor Cassidy. Councillor Murphy, if you're going to make comments, can you please pass your comments through the Chair? Councillor Murphy, you're rising on a point of, ah, councillor Cassidy, you're rising on a point of order.
Claim to be misrepresented.
Noted, thank you. Councillor Murphy, you've got the call.
We know, Chair, councillor Cassidy has had all number of theories about Brisbane Metro over the years, you know, that it wouldn't meet the capacity improvement on the busway that we committed to, that the Lord Mayor had personally instructed people to hide the tyres behind wheel covers and protective spats. You know, the charging containers wouldn't work. There have been so many conspiracy theories that councillor Cassidy has espoused about Brisbane Metro. And, you know, none of them are true, Chair. And when Brisbane Metro is operating and passengers are enjoying it next year, well, he is going to have to eat his words about the performance of Brisbane Metro, because I'm looking forward to it, everyone on this side of the chamber is looking forward to it. And as our trophy cabinet in the back can attest to, it just keeps gathering more and more awards for Brisbane Metro, because people know that this is a quality project and that this will change the way people move in Brisbane.
Thank you, councillor Murphy. Councillor Cassidy, your point of misrepresentation.
Thanks very much, Chair. The fact, what I said and what councillor Murphy misrepresented in saying somehow was a conspiracy theory was that the Metro buses will number 60. Regular buses currently number over 1,200, and yet the Metro buses will be using 10% of the budget. They're clearly more expensive on any measure, it's not a conspiracy theory, it's fact.
Thank you, councillor Cassidy. Councillor Johnson, I believe you were going to rise?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I rise to speak on perhaps all items A through to E. Can I just ask that item B is taken sereatum? I'm not sure where the sereatum's actually are.
Currently, councillor Johnson, we have A and B together for voting purposes?
I would like that separated, so like B to be on its own, if that's okay, thanks.
Noted, not a problem.
Thank you. First of all, I'll start with item A. On the face of it, this seems like a reasonable proposition. But unfortunately, over the past 15 years, I've seen too many bad deals by this LMP when it comes to unusual transactions. And I have some concerns about what is proposed here and whether there will be any community benefit for the broader community. The Lord Mayor has confirmed in his speech earlier in answer to my question that this will not be a publicly capped pool for entry, that this will be a privately-run pool with private entry fees. So that means that depending on what the pool providers do, it may be exclusively used for schools or private lessons. I don't know what it will be. But there's no commitment to a publicly-funded, publicly-accessible pool. Now, we are consenting today to public land, which is leased to a sports club, to be then handed over to a private commercial developer for the purposes of building a commercial pool. There are some funds in there that are going to flow back through, possibly. Again, so many of these deals go wrong with this Lord Mayor and the LMP involved. But the big problem I've got here is the Lord Mayor has stood up here today and said, this will be a great community asset. Well, it won't be, because it's going to be privately run with a private organisation setting the fees and determining who can come into the pool. So it's not going to be publicly accessible. And to me, the lease arrangement that we're entering into here does not protect that community benefit. So my question is, why wasn't that part of our lease arrangements in terms of ensuring there was some public access use and some price monitoring with respect to this arrangement? Because these are things that could be conditioned in any lease agreement, and the Lord Mayor and the community leasing team have chosen not to do that. So they are saying it is perfectly okay to have a private commercial pool on council land that may have no public access, other than for, you know, look, I don't know how it goes, Somerville might book it out for water polo for the rest of the year. Presumably, to do this, there are people who have committed to use it for private bookings. So my question becomes, why as a council are we not seeking the best possible outcome for the broader community and the public? And that's where this LMP administration falls down every time. Ultimately, in 30 years, under this arrangement, we'll inherit a 30-year-old pool that's going to desperately need upgrading, it's going to cost a lot of money. Let's say that this private company go, I presume there's some conditions in there. If they no longer operate it, the pool will come back to Brisbane City Council. I don't know if it means it's taken over by the sports club. So there's a lot of issues here in terms of how this asset might be returned to us. Has council said at the end of your lease you must restore the pool to a modern contemporary standard? Are there any conditions in the lease about maintaining the pool to certain standards over that 30-year term? This is the problem with the LMP, that we don't know that our asset is going to be protected and looked after. And certainly, there are no guarantees here that the public and the broader community will have reasonable access to this facility. And those things are problematic. If we're going to hand land over to commercial developers, we need to make sure that there will be benefit to council and no long-term detriment. Because inheriting a pool that's got to be shut down because it's no longer in a fit state for use, that would not be a good outcome out of this. So there are a number of questions I have about whether this is a good deal for the community. I presume it's a good deal for the operator, because the operator gets a very cheap lease, and they don't have to go and buy land on the open market to build their pool. So there's definitely a benefit for the operator. There's definitely a benefit for the sports club, the people running the sports club. They're going to generate revenue from having a subtenant that will contribute funds back. But I'm not sure that the public are going to benefit from this arrangement. And I'm not sure that council, i.e. the ratepayers, will benefit in the long term by inheriting, we have a good asset returned to us. So my questions about this to the Lord Mayor are, has someone done the due diligence here? Has someone thought this through? Why are we not requiring public access? And why are we not requiring fees to be capped in line with our pool policy, which are huge to start with? It costs like $4.50 to enter a pool as a spectator. So you don't even get in the water. Just to accompany somebody into a pool if you're not swimming, it costs $4.50. It's outrageous. What's a private contractor going to do? And is this pool just going to be in use by others and not the public? I also want to speak on item B. Obviously, there are a number of changes to the flood code.
Councillors, please.
There are a number of changes to the flood code that are being proposed here today. Some are okay, some are not. Firstly, I welcome, it's taken quite a while, but I welcome the amendment coming through to rezone the vacant blocks that have been bought back as part of our arrangement with the QRA. This isn't all of them, there are still a number of them that have not been finalised or are still waiting to be finalised. And there are still people in terrible state whilst these issues are being resolved. In this proposal before us today, there are about 80 in my ward across a number of suburbs. These are houses that should never have been approved by council to begin with. And there are 10 times this many in the immediate areas around them that will flood again in future. So whilst I welcome the addition of these homes to the parkland and open space zoning, this is a good outcome, this is what we agreed with the state, and it's good to see it happening. I have some concerns with what is proposed, or the lack of what is proposed in the amendments to the flood code. So the flood code itself is supposed to do a number of things, and I'll just mention some of these very briefly, because technically, if people, technically, if people, you know, if this administration followed the flood code, we wouldn't have a flooding problem in Brisbane. But council doesn't follow the flood code. So this is the purposes of the flood code. Development minimises exposure of people and property to unacceptable risk from flood hazard in all flood events. This council allows retirement villages and nursing homes to be built in flood zones. This council allows, just a few weeks ago, residential properties to be built in known flood zones. It then says that development and infrastructure mitigates flood risk through its location, design, site and construction. Well, you know, I've got a DA in my area where the apartments flood now, and all of the electrical services for the latest stage are still below the floodline. And getting council to recognise that the new development will have power that is under the flood level and getting that changed, that seems to be a very hard thing for council to actually deal with. It says here that you have to have efficient evacuation and access and evacuation resources available. I think councillor Massey might want to talk about this and the Carrillborough precinct, but I know in my ward, where councils built, allowed, I'm sorry, where councils allowed retirement villages and nursing homes to be built, people have to be canoed out, and they've got to wait for two days in their nursing home without power. That is not good enough. But the worst problem that should be fixed in the flood code here is fill. This council still allows fill in flood zones. They allow fill. Fill raises the height of land, and people living next to it who cannot raise because their house was built on a slab cop more water. Fill should not be allowed. This is a huge problem in our planning scheme, particularly in flooded areas in the back of the suburb of Tennyson, where people have raised, it's under a metre, the back of the block's not retained, no drainage, it slopes down, and it's formed a huge gully. So the houses that are slightly lower get flooded, it's not good enough.
Thank you.
Point of order, Chair. Chair, I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for a period of 15 minutes, which commences only when councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. Seconded.
We have a motion for afternoon recess moved by councillor Hutton and seconded by councillor Jenkins. All those in favour say aye. Those against say no. The ayes have it. See in 15, councillors. Further speakers, deputy mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I rise to speak on item A. With great pleasure to ask the council's approval to provide a new lease to Holland Park Sports and Community Club. Not only will this provide security of tenure for the club, which will see them change over their previous 10-year lease to a new 30-year lease, but will also ensure their long-term viability through the support of Aquatic Achievers, who's partnering with the club to build a brand-new, state-of-the-art $7.5 million aquatic centre. So there's a long history of this club. I have recently been to their 80th birthday of them being a bowls club, and it has changed a little bit over the years. It was the Holland Park Bowls Club originally, but they came through, as a lot of bowls clubs have in our city, through some tough times in recent years. And the Linden Bowls Club, which is a women's-only bowls club also in my area, was all but defunct for members not playing there. So the Linden ladies decided to sell their bowls club in Gainsford Street, which is now a fantastic Ukrainian club with a great restaurant. Ladies and gentlemen, if you want some authentic Ukrainian food on a Friday and Saturday night, where the Linden Bowls used to be. And the Linden Bowl ladies, with the money that they made from their sale, joined with the Holland Park Bowls Club to become Holland Park Sports and Rec Club. Now, they've been doing wonderful work at the club to reinvigorate the bowls, doing what we see many bowls clubs doing, making sure they've got offerings for dinner on a Friday and Saturday night with food trucks, they've got a coffee van there that's there in the morning for the, next door to Holland Park State School. They have functions, they've upgraded their facilities to add air conditioning into their community hall, as well as the barefoot bowls and everything everyone loves about bowls club. But the reality is, two greens were not necessary, and it's a very old building that requires enormous amount of upkeep and the next level of upgrades when it comes to the kitchen and catering for the local community. My local community loves the Holland Park Sport and Rec Club. And when they first came to me with this proposal over four years ago now, going into Covid, they really were struggling for the economic viability of the club. Obviously, during Covid, it got even worse. But what did we see after six or seven months of Covid when we started getting out and about again? Everybody loves their local club, and it is a much-beloved hangout now on a Sunday afternoon. They have live music, as I said, food trucks, and they do some food themselves as well. During that time, though, they realised they needed to look at another opportunity for economic sustainability. And good on them, because there are so many clubs that just expect to come to council and ask for the handout rather than the hand up. But they've said, we've come out, we've come up with an idea. Taken off the very successful outcome of the bowls club in Northgate Ward, where Aquatic Achievers worked with North, with Wazil? Northe, thank you, councillor, Northern Suburbs Bowls Club as well. So the Aquatic Achievers are working with the Holland Park Sports and Recs Club to use their one green on the northern side that they don't use at the moment. It's not maintained for bowls, it's basically the run-around area for the kids while people are playing bowls. But there will still be a lot of room, because they are expanding around their leased car park area as well. The Aquatic Achievers will be fully funding the new aquatic centre, aiming to teach approximately 2,000 babies and children per week. So it's not a private pool where you go and swim laps, or you'll hire it out for water polo for private functions. It is a learn-to-swim school. And they have done the economic studies around the area, it is desperately needed. What we are definitely seeing as houses get bigger on smaller blocks is the one thing that backyards are having less and less of as we go forward is swimming pools. And I think it is vitally important that if we are reducing the number of swimming pools in backyards, that kids get to learn to swim straight away. My little twenties were nine months old, I could hardly even find togs that would fit my daughter to take her to swimming lessons when she was that little. But they were in there doing their bubble-bubble breath as soon as they could. And I think every family needs that opportunity. And I know that Langlands Pool is absolutely full to the brim down there. I know Marquardt East Swimming School is full to the brim down there as well. So the Aquatic Achievers is really a great outcome for the local community. Not a public swimming pool, a learn-to-swim school. On top of that, I hear that one of the councillors was saying that there was no community benefit. The community benefit that I see for this is the long-term economic viability of the Holland Park Sports and Rec Club. They are a fantastic group of senior people that keep a community group together, give an opportunity for families to gather over the weekends, regularly have events that they invite the wider community. And with the wrench or the leasing amount from the Aquatic Achievers starting at a base of $100,000 a year, that will go an enormous way for them to be able to take their community club to the next level. It's been a long road to get here, it's taken a lot of work. I also want to thank the work of my local state member, you won't often hear this from an LNP member, but my local state member, Joe Kelly, who saw how good this would be from the get-go, and made representations to the state government. from the get-go, and made representations to the state government, because this is within a land management plan of Mott Park, which is a very important district park that the bowls' club leased area is within as well. Joe has supported it from the get-go. They are now speaking to the community about the impacts. There will be a DA that will need to come through once this happens, and everyone will be able to have their say. But I support the Holland Park Sports and Rec Club. This lease has been set up that if it doesn't succeed or it does not get built within 10 years, then it will revert back to a normal community lease. But they're giving it a go, and I support them wholeheartedly to make sure that they are here for another 80 years. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Further speakers? Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I rise to speak on item B, the minor P amendment. The proposed amendment seeks to firstly, update the zone mapping and overlays to enable non-habitable use of the subject properties purchased under the voluntary home buyback programme, and two, maintain the currency of the planning scheme through updating references and standards as well as text refinements. As the Lord Mayor has outlined, council administers the voluntary home buyback programme within Brisbane on behalf of the state government's Queensland Reconstruction Authority. This responsibility includes facilitating the purchase, clearing or rehabilitation of the property, and change of zone of the sites identified. Despite the registration for the programme commencing in May 2022, it was not until August this year that the state provided a streamlined process to undertake the necessary zoning changes to ensure the properties were retained as open green space. This change, through the minister's guidelines and rules, enabled this process to occur through a minor amendment process as we have before us today. The 186 properties that have been identified within this package will now be rezoned to open space. Rezoning the properties and converting them to open space ensures the surrounding community has flood risk minimised as well as delivering additional amenity. As to whether the sites are appropriate for specific park infrastructure, such as sportsfields, playgrounds, or minor embellishments, would be assessed on a case-by-case basis depending on the level of flood risk at the site. There are also minor and administrative text changes proposed as part of the amendment. These changes include clarification of existing policy for certification of flood studies, updates to references and terminology, and clarity on the requirements of Queensland government legislation on referable dams. The updated references include changes made as a result of updates to the Queensland Urban Drainage Manual, and, Mr. Chair, I commend this item to the chamber.
Thank you, councillor Allen. Are there any further speakers? See no one rising. We will now, no, the LM's not here for write a reply either. No, we will now put the report. We'll start off with item A. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. We'll go and move on to item B. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. We'll now vote on items C, D, and E as a block. All of those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Strunk. Ayes to my right and noes to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells. Clarks, please read the results.
Mr. Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 16 in favour and four abstentions.
Counselors, the ENC report has passed. Deputy Mayor, Economic Development and Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee, please.
Mr. Chair, I move that the report of the Economic Development and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 24th of October, 2023, be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Jenkinson that the report of the Economic Development and Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 24th of October, 2023, be adopted.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order. Councillor Cassidy.
Yeah, thanks very much. Just a procedural motion I move that, the motion currently lying on the table, that Brisbane City Council commits to buying all future buses from South East Queensland manufacturers now come off the table, given the trial concluded on the 24th of August, 2023. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion, pardon me. We have a motion before us, a procedural motion, to take the motion off the table that Brisbane City Council commits to buying all future buses from South East Queensland manufacturers, which was moved by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Strunk. All those in favour of taking the motion off the table, say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no.
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Strunk. Ayes to my right and noes to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells. No, cancel. Clarks, please read the results.
Mr. Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being five in favour and 16 against.
Counselors, the procedural motion has been lost. Please return to your seats. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before I get to the substantive on what was in the reports today, I just want to talk about an event I was at on Sunday night. I am very lucky as the Chair of Economic Development and Brisbane 2032 and Olympic Games Committee that international relations and multicultural affair comes under my portfolio as well. And the small but amazing team in there, as I mentioned last week, did a fantastic job for the APCS, but they also do a fantastic job as a small DFAT here in council, which is no understatement of the amount of work they do with our local communities, international communities, our multicultural communities, and our honorary consul as well. And on Sunday night, we had the pleasure of attending the Turkish 100th anniversary of their republic, which obviously, 100 years ago, on the 19th of October in 1923. At the time, led by then-President Ataturk, which we all know very well from the Battle of Gallipoli, and the sense, very close relationship that Australia has with the Turkish and the fields of Gallipoli, which is really now a bucket list for people to go and visit to commemorate what's happened there in the 19-teens. However, for me, it was an absolutely amazing night because I was very, very privileged to receive the Turkish badge of friendship. And I have to say thank you to the honourable consul, Turgut Manly, who I know organised this with the Turkish Women's Association, who do the most amazing work throughout the community, in all of the community, not just the Turkish community, in bringing our multicultural groups together and supporting those that are more in need. So I was very, very humbled to be the inaugural receiver of this badge. It was a lovely night, and again, I say thank you to the Turkish community. Thank you for what you do in our community, and it was our absolute pleasure, on behalf of Team Shrinna, I met with them after the earthquake in February because the Lord Mayor was with South East Queensland Council of Mayors, to be able to support them through that very difficult time. And now, while it's a little bit more prosperous for them here, that we are still best of friends and working with them. So thank you to the Turkish community and what they do. Before I go on to the report, again, the Business Hub report for the week, and we had a third-year birthday party this morning as well in committee around the Business Hub, with their three years in review, but what's actually coming up in the next week? What if big companies and SMEs could actually talk together? So this is a presentation by Bronwyn Reed about how the big end of town can increase their ESGs around actively working with SMEs and invalubly engaging with them as suppliers, and also to SMEs about what they might be doing wrong that is not making them attractive to big companies, and what will make them want to buy from you as well. So there'll be some great information there from both sides of the coin, and that is on the 7th of November at 9:30 in the morning. Don't forget, please, that the Women's in Business Grants is open until Monday. So Monday, if you know a small business that has under 20 employees, that is at least 50% owned by a female and has a turnover between $75,000 and $500,000, that the Women's in Business Grants are open until Monday, so please get that information out to your communities. We've helped 106 women's businesses over the last few years. This is a third intake, and we're looking, getting really excited to find out some of the fantastic stories that will come out of this year's cohort as well. But then, of course, last week's committee report was absolutely fantastic, not just for us to hear it as the councillors, but for the council officers who have worked so hard to present to us our success in getting the gold certification from United Nations Habitat Group in STGs. And we are the second only city in the world to receive gold certification. La Paz in Bolivia is the first one. We are also the first to do an action-oriented voluntary local review, and we've actually worked with UN Habitat to develop and pilot their review for this certification. So it's a baseline report on council's progress and its initiative, and describes how strategies connect with STGs in a local context. So not all 72 STGs fit into our councils, we don't provide schools and hospitals, so we picked 17 of those that we could definitely target as a baseline and to improve. And then there's also the urban monitoring framework that we work around as well. And our framework had four localised themes: resilient economy, health and prosperity, active, healthy and green, inclusion, diverse and equitable, and livable and connected. So it is fantastic to see that the UN Habitat has recognised that we are at a gold certification at this level, and one of our responsibilities is to now work with developing nations and cities on how they can also look at their baseline to aspire to do better in the environmentally sustainable goals space as well. So can I say congratulations to Tanya, Di, and all the team that I know spent endless hours working through this review, pulling it all together from all of our portfolios? And of course, the UN Habitat is based overseas, so many, many meetings at 3:00 AM in the morning to fit in with their work hours. It was a very, very large job, and it is well-deserved by all of the council officers who do such a fantastic job in this place, and we are very, very proud to be the second only city in the world to have gold certification in ESGs. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Further speakers? See no one rising. We will now put the report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Murphy, Transport Committee, please.
Second chair. Do I have my notes? Yeah, I do have it, Chair. I move that the report of the Transport Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 24th of October, 2023, be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Murphy and seconded by councillor Jenkinson. The report of the Transport Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 24th of October, 2023, be adopted. Councillor Murphy.
So.
Just one moment. Councillor Murphy, point of order, councillor Cassidy.
Oh, thanks very much, Chair. Just a procedural motion I move that the motion currently lying on the table that Brisbane City Council commits to urgently installing the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander flags on the Story Bridge in addition to the Australian flag come off the table, given the consultation wrapped up in September 2023.
Thank you, councillor Cassidy. Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Thank you, councillor. Excuse me one moment, those pretzels were making me thirsty. Pardon me. We have a procedural motion before us to remove a motion from the table that Brisbane City Council commits to urgently installing the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander flags on the Story Bridge in addition to the Australian flag. It's been moved by councillor Cassidy and moved by, seconded by councillor Whitme, that it come off the table. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no.
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Whitme. Ayes to my right and noes to my left, please. Clarks, please read the results.
Mr. Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being four in favour and 16 against.
Counselors, the procedural motion to take the other motion off the table has not passed. Please resume your seats. Councillor Murphy, you've got the call.
Thank you, Chair. Last week, the Transport Committee received an update on active transport projects that are happening throughout our city. During the presentation, we were shown several drone images and detailed construction plans for three key projects. These include the Bill Brown Reserve Shared Pathway in Fitzgibbon, the Yocum Street Shared Path in Holland Park West, and the Bar Street Creek Crossing Upgrade in Tarragindi. Two of these projects have now been completed, closed out, with Bill Brown Reserve finishing very soon and Yocum Street finishing earlier this month. The Bar Street Park Creek Crossing is still in progress, and this is expected to be completed by December this year. This project involves transforming the existing crossing into a 17 and a half metre long, 3.6 metre wide bridge, and I'd just like to extend my gratitude to all of those involved in these projects and express my thanks for their attention and hard work in delivering these assets for our community. That's why we're all here. Moving on to petitions, the committee considered a petition with 137 signatures calling for a two-way separated bike way along Gladstone Road and Dornot Terrace. Council's response noted that Gladstone Road and Dornot Terrace are classified as secondary cycle routes in the city plan. It also noted that residents were consulted back in 2019 on the construction of bike lanes in Dornot Terrace, and 64% were not in favour of their construction. And based on that feedback and the need for strong community support for these projects, we don't propose to install two-lane bike lanes along Gladstone Road or Dornot Terrace until such a time as we can see that community sentiment has changed. So the committee also considered a petition for an additional bus stop on route 435, which is along Rafting Ground Road and Brookfield. They're two existing stops on Rafting Ground Road, but these stops are over 800 metres apart, so based on expected patronage, if we do support an additional bus stop at the proposed location, we'll undertake design and consultation, and if successful, we'll list a stop for funding in future years as part of the bus stop upgrade programme. Finally, Chair, I want to reflect on the recent anniversary of the death of council bus driver Mamie Sharma. Last Saturday, October 28, marked seven years since Mamie tragically lost his life operating Route 125 between Garden City and the Valley. Mamie was only 29 years old at the time of his death. His whole life was still ahead of him. He was engaged to be married only three months earlier, and he had just started a new job working for council as a bus driver. Passengers recorded the inquest, how Mamie cheerily greeted them on that day as they boarded the bus. His friends and family described him to the inquest as compassionate and charismatic, the life of the party. He not only worked as a bus driver, but he was also a radio announcer, a singer and an actor too. He was a valued member of the local Punjabi community and our community at Transport for Brisbane. As we now know, and the inquest has revealed, on that day Mamie was savagely, brutally, and randomly attacked by a passenger who boarded the bus, Anthony O'Donoghue. Mamie was set on fire, and he tragically passed away from those injuries within seconds. Still to this day... Still to this day, it is shocking to think how quickly one's life can end as a result of a random act of violence. One meet, one minute Manme was there, and then the next, he was not. I know I speak for all councillors in this place when I say our thoughts are with Manme's family, his friends, and with all council bus drivers on the seventh anniversary of his death. I know that everyone continues to feel the heavy weight of his loss. On Friday, we received the recommendations from the coronial inquest into Manme's death. It was a very difficult day, Chair, but I do hope that it helped to bring a sense of closure to everyone that has been involved in this process. As the coroner noted, the event was unprecedented in the history of public transport in Brisbane, and hopefully, Chair, it's one that will never be repeated. I don't have time to fully discuss the comments that the coroner made, but suffice to say that the locus of the inquest was on the circumstances of Anthony O'Donoghue's mental health, his treatment, and the conditions of his release into the community. An attack like this is, as the coroner said, impossible to predict and very hard to prevent. But in the seven years since Manme's death, we have made sure to learn from that incident. It certainly prompted a significant shift in council's attitude to bus driver safety and security, as you know, Chair. Following the event, we conducted our own independent review. We implemented all the recommendations from that process. All of our safety improvements, from upgraded emergency exits to emergency, additional emergency response vehicles, to bus driver safety barriers, are all part of Manme Sharma's ongoing legacy. And while we have put many additional safety measures in place to best protect our bus drivers and the traveling public, we of course acknowledge that there is more to do, and that work is ongoing. The right solution isn't always straightforward, Chair. We have a large and complex fleet, many different bus types, and new technologies are constantly emerging. But we are committed to honor Manme's legacy by making safety our priority, and we'll continue to invest in safety measures to support all of our bus drivers. And it's good to see, Chair, as I've mentioned in the chamber previously, the state government step up and acknowledge the role that they play in bus driver safety, not just for Brisbane City Council bus drivers, but for bus drivers all around the state and all around, obviously, the network that TransLink delivers. I would particularly like to acknowledge Counsel Owen's ongoing commitment to remembering Manme's legacy. She's been a very strong advocate for his family and his community every step of the way. She even traveled to India to meet with Manme's relatives, to express council's condolences and to articulate our ongoing grief at his loss. But I'd also like to acknowledge those in Transport for Brisbane who have been, who have been dealing with and managing this issue for a long period of time. Particularly like to thank former Transport for Brisbane head Jeff Beck, current head of Transport for Brisbane Samantha Abadira, who have led TFB through these difficult times. I want to thank Carl Hayne and his engineering team for the work that they've done to develop new safety solutions. Obviously, the most recent impressive work that they've done is around the Bus Driver Safety Barrier retrofit program, installing new modern safety screens on older chassis, a very difficult task. He has done a great job, as well as our fleet engineer, John Hatchman. I'd also like to acknowledge Brett Howe and the work that he has done engaging with all of our depot managers there, our interface with the drivers out there on the road during what is a difficult time, whenever, you know, this event approaches its anniversary. It's always a difficult reminder of the, you know, the, everyone's mortality and the random and sometimes difficult circumstances that our drivers face out there on the road. I know that it's been a raw and an emotional experience for our management team and also for our bus drivers. But most importantly, I wanted to say thank you to all of our bus drivers. They serve the people of Brisbane each and every day. I know, Chair, that Manme's friends and family would want him to be remembered as a kind-hearted, community-minded person. But I also know that Brisbane is a city that is full of many more kind, community-minded people that honor Manme's legacy with the work that they do for our city each and every day. So on the anniversary of his death, there is, I think, no better way for Brisbane residents to pay tribute to Manme's legacy than by saying thank you to their bus driver on their way to work or on their way home. I think that little bit of kindness will let them know how much this community appreciates everything they do, and I'll leave my comments to that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Council Murphy. Are there any further speakers? Council Massey.
Thanks, Chair. I'd like, I rise to speak on the petition requesting council install bike way along Gladstone Road and Dornoch Terrace in Highgate Hill. And I would like to move this item for voting in Sari Adam. Dornoch Terrace and Gladstone Road are classified as secondary cycle routes in the city plan, so important for residents commuting on bicycles. But this area is also a part of the River Loop, a popular recreational cycle route that follows the Brisbane River from South Bank to Indrapilly and back again. This route is popular on weekends with riders of all strides heading out for some fresh air and some exercise. A highly active, a high-active transportation usage space, which is incredibly dangerous for pedestrians, cyclists, and recreational bicycle users, within an inner-city precinct, an area that is being pinged hold by mandated high density from the LMP Brisbane City Council and the ALP State Government. In this reality, it's clear that the safety for active transport users should be a council priority. The response from this petition does not even mention safety. Rather, it focuses on a botched consultation from two thousand and nineteen, where Brisbane City Council made a design and then consultation occurred. We see this over and over and over again, that there is no meaningful consultation with the community in the deliver and design of active public transport routes. Rather than a back and forth to take community and the user groups on a journey to come towards an optimal outcome, this just doesn't happen, and it certainly didn't happen for this project. Rather than deliver safety and protection for users in the community or even try to find a pathway there, this petition states that there is no support from the community based on evidence done four years ago. And there is going to be no current or future plan for delivery of safety for residents and users along this area in Dornoch Terrace and Gladstone Road. No review, no contribution from Brisbane City Council to do consultation or work for an outcome that will suit everyone in this highly-used and dangerous area. That work will come down to me, and I'm happy to do that work. But this lack of investment in active transport comes as no surprise when we look at the fact that this council is overseeing a four-hundred-million-dollar black hole and has cut developer contributions to infrastructure charges. And we will see that current and future active transport projects will be cut or just be paused indefinitely. And we will know and see that because, of course, the first projects announced, when the cuts were announced, were active public tran, or active transport projects. And that's because intricately and initiatively and fundamentally, active transport just isn't a priority for this LMP council. We need to work with communities and users to make sure that Gladstone Road and Dornoch Terrace in Highgate Hill is safe to be used, using the best practices in community consultation. And this will involve actually consulting with the community and bringing them along for the journey. I reject the Brisbane City Council's response to this petition, and I urge all councillors that support and understand the need for safety in active transport routes across Brisbane to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Massey. Further speakers? Council Landers.
Thank you, Chair. And I just want to speak on item A and the Bill Brown Reserve Shared Pathway. When I first became a councillor, four years ago, I think it was last week, in my maiden speech, I actually spoke about the Bill Brown Reserve and what an important area it is in my community. And it has evolved and changed since that area was the local, the dump, and the Senate Share has always grown up in that area and have seen it grow and become a fantastic reserve and community space, with the Hidden World Playground over on the Rogan roadside of Bill Brown Reserve and Dog Off Leash area, and on the Telegraph roadside, skate park, BMX track, netball courts, Emily Seabom Swimming Centre, the Warrar Rehoming Centre. And since I became a councillor, I have secured a Dog Off Leash area there, too, which is extremely well-used. And we recently held our movie night there. So this area is a, is like, I guess, the middle of my community, the bushland itself in the Fitzgibbon bushland there is like the lungs of, of my community. In fact, in my ward, I have a beautiful painting that local First Nations artist Lisa Karuana, who lives in Fitzgibbon, had, has done for me, which is absolutely beautiful with the Fitzgibbon bushland in the middle and then suburbs surrounding that, so it tells a beautiful story. So this area is very important to my community. And when I became a councillor, I mentioned in my maiden speech that I would like to see the connectivity between Fitzgibbon and the Fitzgibbon side Rogan Road and Telegraph side improved so that, you know, many communities could easily move in and out and enjoy all of those facilities together without, without having to get on the road and drive there, but using active travel. And those aspirations were reinforced further along when I became a councillor with, I went for a ride with Andrew from my local bug, and that's exactly where he took me and just reinforced what, you know, I knew what my community knew. And it was exactly where he could see a few issues and what he would like to, to see improved in our active travel. So the first thing that I was able to do, and I did that with the local federal member, Luke Howarth, was to secure funding to formalize Rogan Road, where it goes from the main sort of precinct at the Fitzgibbon Community Centre down to Hidden World. And in doing so, we were able to actually put a path there, an active travel path that formalized and sorted out that section. And then, of course, we were able to work on the pathway that now connects from there, from the, in the playground, through to Telegraph Road. So it is faster for people. It, it means that the community can easily move between the two spaces and enjoy both those areas and actually feel like one community. So I'm really looking forward to this project being done. It was very exciting this month when we saw the bridge beams go in and the concrete was poured. So very exciting to see that happen because it's sort of all gone on behind through the back of the bush, and people can't quite see it happening. But when they saw it coming up to Telegraph Road and meeting the road and seeing that bridge go in, it was a very exciting moment, and we know that we're getting very close to that being finished. So I just want to thank Counselor Murphy for all that his area have done to get that happening in my community. I know everyone is very excited and looking forward to when it will open. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Landers. Are there any further speakers? Council Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. I rise to speak on B, I think. Is that the petition? Yeah, item B in Dornoch Terrace. And just put on record my fundamental objection to the recommendation and the approach at which this LMP administration seems to now be taking in non-LMP wards when it comes to consultation on projects. And I made no views in the committee last week about the project itself that was proposed in twenty nineteen, but the recommendation to a petition started by and signed by people living in Brisbane was that the recommendation said that the local councillor had to go and consult on a project, an unspecified project, and then bring that consultation back to council, and then that would then proceed, or something like that. It's an extremely vague response, and it's the exact same, it's the exact same situation we've seen now down on Riding Road in the Morningside Ward when it comes to an intersection upgrade there, where there, at least there, there are multiple designs, even though Counselor Wines is totally confused about what's included in them. But the requirement is the local councillor has to go and do that consultation without the support of the organization, without council, without a proposal. So, and we're starting to see that become more and more evident, but not in LMP wards. Because the other petition, item C, which is on here today, Counselor Murphy said in his opening remarks just now that council will go and do the design and consultation on the bus stop in Counselor, in Counselor Adaman's ward. Council will do the design and the consultation, but in the Gabber Ward here or in Morningside Ward for that one that I just mentioned. And they tried it on in my ward, but I pushed back and was able to get council to consult on some changes. Because fundamentally, that is the role of council in designing. We employ these people to do this work. Well, we certainly should be employing more in-house to be able to do this work, and it would be done better if there were more in-house staff to do this, to do the design and consultation before a project is listed for funding. And clearly, the LMP think that when it comes to their wards. I'm sure Counselor Landers didn't have to do the design herself and all the consultation, the formal consultation on the path in Bill Brown Reserve. That wouldn't have happened. But yet, that's what the LMP are saying has to happen in non-LMP wards, that local councillors are supposed to do a detailed design and consult on that, then bring that back to the Transport Committee. That's basically what Counselor Murphy said the process needed to be last week, which is not a real thing. It's something he just made up and included in that response. But it does, I suppose, send a signal about what the LMP want to fund and what they don't. And whatever, the, 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 the project, Dornoch Terrace wasn't supported as proposed by the community, understandable. That was then. That was a point in time. There is no proposal now, and yet the response is that a local councillor has to go and consult on something that I assume the LMP want them to just make up themselves. And so the LMP let the cat out of the bag a couple of months ago, no, not even a couple of months ago, late last session where Counselor Murphy said there are no, there's no planning, no design, no proposals in the future years from twenty twenty-four on for active transport projects. He said they will only come about as a result of election commitments by political parties. So we can sort of then understand when you start to piece all of that together, why there is no design, why there is no consultation on any projects, whether it's this one, whether it's any project going forward, because the LMP at this stage have no commitment to or desire to invest in active transport projects that are outside of the existing one-point-five green bridges that we've got currently under construction. Kangaroo Point Green Bridge, well, Bike Bridge, Bike and Pedestrian Bridge and Kangaroo and Restaurant, and the short bike way extension for the Loris Bonney Bike Way, which is just over, over Breakfast Creek. So I think the fundamental issue I have with this response and the new approach that the LMP have brought in summarily, just on their own, decided to just do it this way now, is that they no longer design and consult on projects that they identify should go ahead and fine-tune them and seek community support as, as a council, certainly not when it's in awards that aren't held by the LMP. So that's why we don't support the recommendation on this petition before us, because it, it is a made-up response by this LMP administration that doesn't follow any rigor whatsoever when it comes to community consultation or design or expenditure of ratepayers' money. And I guess, I guess after twenty-long years in charge, this is ultimately what happens when they're very long in the tooth, when they're out of touch with community sentiment and they're entering a sort of complete state of chaos when the Lord Mayor announces just the drop of a hat they've got to fine one-point-six-million dollars a day. just the drop of the hat, they've got to find 1.6 million dollars a day, um, in cuts and they all start scrambling and, um, on, on one hand, say they support the Lord Mayor, on the other hand, say they don't know anything about it. Um, so I guess that chaos, uh, in the LMP is coming through in responses that the LMP are bringing, um, to simple petitions as well. Um, so March next year can't come soon enough.
Thank you, councillor Cassidy. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Adams.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. I just rise to speak on the presentation last week in the Transport, um, portfolio and say thank you to councillor Murphy and the officers for the delivery. Finally, of the Jockham Street, uh, active transport path that goes through the park there. This is one that has been a long, long time coming, something that, um, I promised the community, uh, probably six or seven years ago now. And it's not council that held it up, but it was the Vella Way that was being delivered by the state government. And when they finished the Vella Way to the state government, they then decided to do the underpass and do the cleaning underneath the road as well. But we did finally get tick off that we could access through state government land for this pathway to be completed, to connect the Holland Park West through to the Vella Way, much simpler than driving or riding, I should say, over Marshall Road and around major intersections and traffic. So it's fantastic off-road connection, um, for residential areas into, um, the, uh, the Vella Way. And not to mention now, probably what wasn't seen seven years ago, it's also right beside brand new pickleball courts, which are much beloved and rented, or not rented, I should say, used all weekend after they borrowed the equipment from my ward office. So it's a fantastic active space down there now as well with the pickleball courts and, um, the path as well. Also the Bar Street Bridge, which is in my ward, which is a small wooden bridge for many, many, many years, but particularly after the 22 floods was inundated and, uh, is just not suitable, um, for what it needed to be. And that is a connection for the bike way, bike and riders and cyclists, again, a connection for the residential area down onto the Vella Way and onto the Bike Way on the South East Freeway into town. So a highly used, um, off-road cycle area and, uh, the upgrade will see it, um, absolutely flood immune, unless we have something even bigger than what we've experienced in the last few years. But it is a, a large structure that will be flood immune and it's going to be great for the community and it will withstand anything for many years to come. So, um, thank you to the officers, the delivery and the residents are very excited and looking forward to using the bridge and are already well and truly treading the path through Jockham Street. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Adams. Are there any further speakers? Seeing none rising, councillor Murphy, write a reply.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Just briefly, uh, I want to thank all councillors for their contribution, uh, on this debate. And I guess it underscores the, um, I suppose, the, the great discussion and collaboration that happens around the Bike Way bill that's happening in this city. And, um, as we grow the pie and as we build more of this infrastructure, there's more, uh, demand that we see for it in communities. But I have to say, um, just referring to councillor Massey's comments, the idea that we are somehow not funding active transport infrastructure or that it's sort of falling away, you know, it's, it's, it's just, it's a ludicrous falsehood because Chair, um, we used to spend 120 million dollars over a four-year term on active transport infrastructure. So from, from, from year, from calendar year 2020 to calendar year 2024, we will spend 516 million dollars on active transport, over half a billion dollars. Do you know what Labour last spent when they were, the last year they were in office, 2003? You know what they spent on active transport infrastructure? Five million dollars. Five million dollars within living memory. And they had the high to come in here and compare our record to our record, but you notice they never come in here and compare their record when they were in office to our record now because the two are absolutely incomparable. We, uh, have left them in the dust when it comes to active transport infrastructure and they hate it. Now councillor Cassidy, um, talked about, uh, that there was some kind of changing standard when it comes to consultation on active transport infrastructure. Um, well, the reality is, uh, yes, he's right, but that's because we are once bitten and twice shy when it comes to taking Labour and Greens councillors at their word when it comes to allowing the officers to do, do detailed designs and community consultation on projects that they say they will support and then they walk away from and they stand there with placards, they say, oh, this is the worst thing ever that the LMP is proposing. And it's funny that councillor Massey raises it, that is exactly what happened on Gladstone Road and Dorlok Terrace. Councillor Sri said, oh, can we, can we do this Bike Way project? It's going to be great. We allocated a lot of money, we allocated eight million dollars to that project. And then when Jackie Trad decided she didn't like it, uh, councillor Sri packed up and ran. He said, oh, now I'm against it as well. So, you know, we, we spent a lot of money doing a detailed design, doing consultation there, when the going got tough, the Greens ran for the hills. So that's why we're not going to waste officer time and energy, we're not going to throw hundreds of thousands, millions of dollars at design and consultation on projects that our opposition then put. I mean, another classic is, uh, is councillor Cumming, you know, supported the Wyndham Bike Way when he was here and then we had, we had to take away literally, I think, one or two car spaces to make it happen. He opposed it, there was, you know, signs and placards. We spent like another six months and God knows how many offices meetings trying to get that one sorted. Probably the piece de resistance is councillor Griffiths though, and we've had, I mean, God knows how many experiences we've had with councillor Griffiths, will tell the officers that he supports it, um, they'll go away in good faith, come up with a design, be ready to build, even start constructing projects. Um, and then he will rock up with the hat on and with the placards and, and tell everyone that it's the worst idea and he didn't even know anything about it. He was never consulted, even though he was. So if there's something that has changed councillor Cassidy, uh, through you, Chair, uh, I noticed that he's walked out of the chamber, it would be, uh, that we don't often trust opposition councillors anymore to, uh, to do what they say they will do, uh, to consult in good faith, to represent their communities in an honest and upfront way. Um, but that's not on us, that's on them. Every councillor on this side does the right thing by their community and when we do community consultation, they work through issues, um, you know, that they, well, is it a stretch? So i- is anything I'm saying through you, Chair, to councillor Massey, anything I'm saying untrue about how councillor Sri walked away, how councillor Griffiths walked away, how councillor Cumming walked away? So that's why, Chair, because we have, we have a lot of designs that sit on the shelf and gather dust because local councillors say they will support things and then walk away. And there's been too many times that that's happened and I, and certainly the Transport Committee are once bitten, twice shy when it comes to these projects.
Thank you, councillor Murphy. We will now put the report, uh, starting off with item B. Councillors, we're starting with item B. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. We'll move on to items A and C. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Is that B? Two of these persons have said aye.
I went to B first, councillor Massey, sorry. Uh, sorry, councillors, we'll do that again, A and C together. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Uh, councillor Wines, Infrastructure Committee, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move the report, the Infrastructure Committee meeting, uh, held on Tuesday, the 24th of October, 2023, be adopted.
I second that.
It has been moved by councillor Wines and seconded by councillor Hammond that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 24th of October, 2023, be adopted. Councillor Wines.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Chair. Look, I just feel the need to respond to some of the comments that councillor Cassidy made only moments ago during the earlier report. Remarkably councillor Cassidy has indicated he thinks consulting with his community is below him and he thinks, and he thinks that that's the job for officers. Well, I would say that no, uh, no councillor is below consulting with their own community, even if you hold the heady position of leader of the opposition. Um, we would, you know, I consult with my community routinely and I would encourage councillor Cassidy to leave this building at least one day a week, uh, at least one day a week and return to his home constituency and tend to his own community. Um, he made another interesting comment where, uh, I believe he was referring to, uh, councillor Collier's recent receipt of some plans for the intersection of Passion Street and Riding Road, Morningside, where he said that I, I, I worded with the effect that I had some sort of misunderstanding of the, uh, material before me. I think the councillor, I was not going to do this to councillor Collier, but councillor Cassidy has raised this matter, so it must be addressed. Uh, councillor Collier was asked to do consultation on the proposed intersection upgrade. The, the plans were provided to her. She wrote to me, are you saying that there are no traffic lights proposed in this? We wrote back to her saying there are traffic lights proposed in both of the plans. It is councillor Collier who could not interpret the plans, not us. And I would strongly recommend, I appreciate she is new, I had no intention of doing this in this place, but for councillor Cassidy's pointless, hollow and gratuitous comments about, uh, that particular consultation. So, um, clearly, uh, maybe, maybe, well, that's an interesting point that councillor Murphy makes, perhaps councillor Collier also thinks consulting with her own residents is below her and that's the job of, uh, of the council officers here. Well, that's not. Uh, as I say, my view, and I'll tell this to all councillors in this place, uh, you should do consultation and the officers should do consultation. And if you do it both correctly together, you will get the best outcome. Now, I appreciate she's new and she can't, and, and she does, she probably doesn't have experience reading some of these plans, but they both included a set of proposed traffic lights. Both proposals provided to her, she did not understand that, that information was provided to her and councillor Cassidy has exposed that limitation. Um, I trust that, uh, that next term councillor Collier will have her chance to be leader of the opposition. Um, if she's successful, she, if she's successful at the general election, she too may have an opportunity to throw councillor Cassidy under the bus next term. Uh, there was a fascinating moment in state parliament recently where, uh, the state member, uh, the temporary state member for Stafford, the one who'll soon be replaced by one of our colleagues here in the near future, uh, came and made an interesting comment about one of our projects. And of course, council, uh, is doing work, uh, on the, on Hamilton Road around, uh, the entrance to the Prince Charles Hospital. So this is the northern end of the Prince Charles Hospital. Uh, council has, uh, been attempting to work with the state government, but we've been attempting to work with the Department of Transport Main Roads, the state government's transport entity, we've been attempting to work with Queensland Health, the owner of, uh, the, the hospital, uh, to try to get them to meaningfully engage and contribute to this project because, uh, the, one of the catalyst events for the project was that a, a person who worked at the hospital attempted to turn across traffic and was in a motor vehicle fatality. And that is not acceptable to me, so we're trying to adjust the traffic lights, uh, the trust.
When have order, Mr. Chair?
Just one moment, please. Just one moment. Councillor Johnson, I consider that you are displaying unsuitable meeting conduct and in accordance with section 21.4 of the meeting's local law, 2001, I hereby request that you refrain from calling out across the chamber. Councillor Wines, you've got the call.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. So there was a fatality at that particular intersection and, uh, I am firmly of the view that an intersection upgrade is necessary. Now, Mr. Sullivan was approached, uh, by councillor Hammond on at least 15 occasions, uh, on at least 15 occasions to seek his support for that, uh, for the intersection upgrade and councillor, excuse me, Mr. Sullivan refused every invitation, refused to participate meaningfully with councillor Hammond in that project, refused to engage with our officers to, to use his position to try and get a better outcome. And, but I think the really, uh, the really great line in this is where he says that the Palisade Government tried to do our job for us. It's a fascinating opinion, particularly considering our work on Beams Road where we've corrected that for them, particularly considering how desperate they are for us to do the Lindham Rail Crossing for them, that they would dare suggest that, uh, they would ever be able to help us achieve anything in this space. They set aside a million dollars. Now, how much do you suspect the actual project costs in its current form, Mr. Chair? The current project costs seven million dollars. Mr. Sullivan's contribution of a million dollars is not a meaningful contribution to the project. If he was serious, it would be 3.5 million dollars. It would be more reflective of the sorts of things that he is trying to achieve. But once again, he refused to come to the table, he refused to provide the leverage that a position such as his holds to try and get a better outcome for his community. And yet here we, here he is accusing us of letting those people down. Well, that's appalling that he could not be bothered and, and he would not participate, but it says something else as well about how the state government operates. Mr. Sullivan believes a million dollars is a meaningful contribution to a seven million dollar project, or maybe he doesn't understand how much these things cost, which also would explain why Minister Bailey's department alone has had a four billion dollar blowout in the last three months. Perhaps the whole Department of Transport can't understand how things, how much things cost. I can, I can tell you, but, uh, for our work in council, there would be, uh, the work at the Beams Road Open Level Crossing would be significantly worse and probably significantly more expensive and would definitely lead to the flooding of residential properties inside councillor Landers Ward. All right, the report from last week. So we have the integrated, it was a presentation on Integrated Traffic Management Centre, which is about rationalising that the centres that run our tunnel, so of course council operates two tunnels, Legacy Way and, uh, the Clem Jones Tunnel. Each of them have their own, uh, control centres, uh, one's at Snade Street and the other one is, uh, in nearby to Snade Street as well, they're actually in quite similar places. They've been consolidated into one location, that location is actually at Kedron, so that transurban can operate their systems in one place. Uh, it has a number of, um, it has a number of, uh, operational benefits, both in a cost sense, for there's only one thing, but also there are benefits to be able to support each tunnel operationally in that space. Uh, the members of the committee have also been informed that we'll be going on a tour of Legacy Way and the, uh, Integrated Transport Management Centre, uh, one evening. The benefits of the, uh, presentation we presented, uh, to the, uh, to the committee, it allows for one modern control centre with AI and machine learning with a universal control system for all three tollways. It decreases the incident response times and it, and increases opportunities for operational redundancy through a backup facility. So that means that we can, the, the risk of, the risk of the system coming down is reduced. There's real-time integrated GPS tracking for incident response resources and the implementation of congestion prediction technology with reliable real-time data. I look forward to, uh, I am looking forward to that tour of the tunnel and trust my committee colleagues are also looking forward to that as well.
Thank you, councillor Wines. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Howard and councillor Whitmead, would you like to take it outside, please? Thank you. Councillors, are there any further speakers? Seeing none rising, we will now put the report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Allen, City, uh, Planning and Suburban Renewal, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 24th of October, 2023, be adopted.
I second it.
It has been moved by councillor Allen and seconded by councillor Atwood that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 24th of October, 2023, be adopted. Councillor Allen, you've got the call.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Before moving to the committee report, I did want to respond to a question that councillor Johnston posed in, uh, recent committee meetings and she wanted to know the number of contractors that, uh, we have within development services and city planning and that number is three. Um, moving to, uh, item A, which was the committee presentation on 62 Carl Street, Woolongaba. Um, 62 Carl Street, Woolongaba revitalises an underutilised site within Woolongaba and provides much-needed housing with a balanced mix of unit types, which includes built-to-rent and 15 NDIS-compatible units. The development is characterised by a 12-storey tower, three basement levels, and the site spans over 2,000 square metres. It encompasses a diverse range of housing units, including 42 one-bedroom units, 69 two-bedroom units, four three-bedroom units, and as I mentioned, 15 one-bedroom units compatible with National Disability Insurance Scheme standards for residential care. So a good variety of units there. The development aligns with the council's New World City Design Guide, Buildings That Breathe. It prioritises elements such as access to open spaces, natural lighting and ventilation, shading, incorporation of greenery, solar panels, outdoor spaces, utilisation and architectural orientation. 62 Carl Street benefits from public transport networks easily accessible via the nearby Buranda train station and high-frequency bus services. Notably, the Princess Alexandra Hospital and the Buranda Shopping Village are within proximity, making the project particularly appealing to residents. 62 Carl Street allocates a total of 136 car parking spaces for residents alongside 130 dedicated bike spaces. for residents alongside a hundred and thirty dedicated bike spaces fostering sustainable mobility. Visitors are also catered to with twenty-nine car parking spaces and thirty-three bike spaces. Additionally, fifteen car parking spaces are designated for persons with disabilities, reinforcing an inclusive approach to development. Residents will benefit from seven hundred and twenty-two square metres of communal open space, thoughtfully distributed on the ground level and the rooftop. The provision of generous private balconies and courtyards enhances residents' access to the outdoors. The development thoughtfully integrates into the existing urban streetscape, preserving the current visual continuity and street engagement. Provision for deep podium planting on each level and landscaping along the Carl Street frontage complements and softens the building form and contributes to the subtropical microclimate of the site and streetscape. This is another example of the Shrima Council supporting the right mix of development in the right locations to support the needs of the growing city of Brisbane. And, Mr Chair, I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you, councillor Allen. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Johnson.
Yes, I'd just rise to speak briefly on this item in Carl Street in Woolangaba. It's just on the other, the northern side of Cornwall Street in what used to be the boundary, on the boundary of Tennyson Wood before the boundary's changed. Coming on to the planning committee has been quite an interesting exercise. I look forward to next week where I will be able to talk about how the deputy planning chairman supports Labour's policy to extend subsidies to other parts of Brisbane. And I really find it interesting when the planning chairperson stands up, as he has here today, and says what great access there is to all these facilities that are very close by to this area. The, the footpaths are terrible. Buranda Shopping Centre's been the subject of a major D A and it's about to be completely demolished. The major intersection that connects this area, so about maybe three or four hundred metres away, the major intersection of Cornwall Street and Ipswich Road, has multiple, multiple slip lanes without any controlled crossing point, whether that's a green light or a zebra. So into an environment where there's not a safe crossing point for people, we're going to put some of the communities most vulnerable. And to me, that's where this council is getting it wrong. If council's going to put apartments into this part of town, that's fine because it is a built up part of town and it does have good access to public transport. But it has extremely poor pedestrian legibility and pedestrian access, extremely poor. It's overtly an issue. It's an issue I have raised year after year in this place. And yet, does council condition any requirements to upgrade the pedestrian crossings to facilitate safe access to the hospital, a place that some people probably, who are going to live in this building, either will need for services or will probably work in? So this is the disconnect between council's planning that delivers inclusive outcomes and bad planning, which is what the L M P is doing. Because you cannot plonk a high rise unit building down and say the three by four metre Buranda, if they're that big, I think somewhere three by three, that's got a bit of greenery cascading over the edge, that's brilliant, that's inclusive. And then say, well, you've got to dodge an arterial road to get to your place of work or to get to your hospital services. That's where council's getting it wrong. Now, council will take in, I don't know, a lot in, I don't know, fees and whatever they're taking, infrastructure charges, I don't know how much they're taking, but it'll be a lot. None of that money is going to get invested back into the local area because this administration refused to put these sorts of projects on the L G I. I have, and just so councillor Allen knows, in addition to the motions I've moved that he's voted against, calling for safe crossing points at this intersection, it's in my L G I submission. Because you cannot keep putting people into these areas with such poor footpaths and without safe crossing points. That's what council needs to get right. The fact that council is putting in a building that's going to provide access for people with disability, great. But you're putting it into an environment where they can't get to the hospital and they can't cross Ipswich Road because there are no safe crossing points. I don't want to see somebody killed whilst the, the infrastructure chairman's very concerned about an accident in an L M P ward on the north side where someone died. When a pedestrian is killed on the south side in my ward, nothing happens. I don't want to see another person killed on this intersection, which is the border of councillor Massey's ward, my ward and councillor Griffith's ward. And I know that councillor Griffith's seconded those motions for me in recent years because these are infrastructure upgrades that must happen to support high density living. You cannot put the units in and not the infrastructure needed to support them. That's what needs to happen here. And it is just the disconnect between what councillor Allen thinks is a good outcome and what's happening on the ground is huge. It's huge. So councillor Massey and myself and councillor Griffith are the ones who are going to hear about, well, why can't we get across the road? It's not safe. We can't get across the road. Let alone any bike infrastructure down there. There's no bike infrastructure. I mean, the other problem, of course, is we know that because of its location, council didn't meet the minimum required number of car parks. Now, this may not be a problem for some people, and councillor Sri would already be saying to me probably, what are you talking about? Yep. However, when you put people who are on the N D I S into apartments, they have carers and they have more than one carer, they have multiple carers, they may have multiple carers per day, who either come to provide personal services and/or activities and so on. Now, I have a large residential living complex for people with a disability in my ward, and just one resident of the forty has seven different carers per week. Council's parking permit scheme doesn't allow for that. It's been a nightmare trying to deal with that. Meanwhile, council's minimised the number of visitor and permanent car parking spaces. These people will probably not be eligible for a permit. And if they are, council's system is going to be, I can tell you now, overwhelmingly complex to navigate. So the other thing that council has not thought about, in my view, is how do you accommodate the service workers who will be needed on this site at a much higher rate than normal? And councillor Allen will say, oh, well, there's X number of apartments and X number of visitor spaces. I don't think it gets exactly what is involved when it comes to service provision for people with disabilities. And that's how we, you know, it's going to have the word visitor written on a car park. What's going to happen when some residents park in the visitor parks? Because there aren't enough visitor spaces, there are no, there's nothing stopping residents from parking in a visitor spot, right? Someone's got to go down and say, you can't park there, identify the vehicle. Who's going to do that? No one. So what's going to happen to the carers who front up and need a car park so they can go and see their client? They're not going to get a space on the road in this area because of where it's located, and they won't be eligible for a parking permit. So these are two glaring problems with how this premises is going to be used that council doesn't think about when it goes through the planning scheme. From council's point of view, it's got, you know, three by three metre balcony, tick. It's got some little green ferns over the edge. Oh, it's got wonderful green landscaping. But meanwhile, there's not enough parking for the service providers to accommodate the use. And the infrastructure needed for people to get around their local neighbourhood simply does not exist. These are shortcomings in the way in which council is assessing these developments, and these are the things that need to be fixed. So we do get inclusive buildings that make it easy for people to navigate their local neighbourhood on foot. And if they have disabilities, can manage those services as easily and simply as possible. And councillor Massey, I really pity you because it's so hard at Fairfield. I can't even tell you. So that's all ahead of you.
Thank you, councillor Johnson. I'm sure that your last comments were directed through the chair. Are there any further speakers? See no one. Councillor Allen, write a reply.
Oh, thank you, Mr Chair. And what an entertaining contribution from councillor Johnston. Now, there's pretty much no development in Brisbane that councillor Johnston isn't prepared to criticise. You know, I don't know that I've ever been in this chamber where she's come out and made a comment to the effect that a development was...
Just one moment, councillor Allen.
Claimed to have misrepresented.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Johnson. Councillor Allen, you've got the call.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I just can't recall when councillor Johnston has ever come into this chamber and, you know, appreciated or made note of a particularly good development. So the starting point is everything gets critiqued. Now, council officers who are experienced at assessing developments, all the components of the development, have approved this development with the car parking that's in there. They've given consideration to the kind of usage that the building's going to get. But of course, councillor Johnston, with her many, many skills, knows far better than the experts within city planning and has decided that the composition and configuration of the parking is totally inadequate. That's her call. In the context of the footpaths and things around there, one of the benefits that is going to accrue with the Buranda Village redevelopment is we will find all those footpaths, particularly around that particular development, will improve. And that's one of the benefits of development, as will the footpaths in front of this development in Carl Street. So that's a well known fact. Developers are responsible for upgrading and providing new footpaths. So I'd expect to see a better outcome in that context. And as we indicated in committee last week, there are a lot of people crossing Ipswich Road in that location. They're crossing them every day. I'd suggest probably in their thousands. So, you know, this sort of notion that we, we need to have some, some major upgrade there doesn't seem to be borne out by the usage that's happening on a daily basis. I'm aware that I suspect there are intersections in that area that are captured in L G I, and that's a good thing. And finally, you know, the sort of context, the point that she made about the balconies, you know, that needs to be seen in the context of the seven hundred and twenty-two square metres of communal open space. So yes, there is that private space that's available to residents, but there's also the communal open space, which is very substantial. So all in all, the criticisms that councillor Johnston has made is pretty typical of her perspective on development. But ultimately, I think they fail to hold water. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you, councillor Allen. Councillor Johnson, your misrepresentation, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair. Councillor Allen said that there is no development that I'm not prepared to criticise. In fact, I only comment on a tiny proportion of developments that are proposed in this city. And that's just a completely false statement.
Thank you, councillor. We will now put the report. All those in favour say aye. Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Davis, Environment, Parks and Sustainability, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Mr Chair, I move that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting held on Tuesday, twenty-fourth of October, twenty twenty-three be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Davis and seconded by councillor Lenders that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the twenty-fourth of October, twenty twenty-three be adopted. Councillor Davis, you've got the call.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Chair, last week's committee presentation was on our river access network. Our river, the mighty Brown Snake, has long been the lifeblood of our city. Until the reclamation of the port of Brisbane in the second half of the twentieth century, the river was the gateway to Queensland and it remains vitally important to transport, trade and commerce in Brisbane city to this day. Along the length of the river are our hubs, which form part of the council river access network. The hubs provide access to the river to maximise the recreational tourism and amenity benefits of this iconic natural asset. We have two types of hubs, river hubs and recreational hubs. Our river hubs at New Farm Park and the City Botanic Gardens provide multipurpose riverine infrastructure, which can accommodate a wide range of vessels and different uses. You can see every kind of vessel birthing at our river hubs from time to time, and they include water taxis, tour boats, kayaks, canoes and of course, jet skis. These larger hubs, or these large hubs cater for everyone from commercial operators to paddleboarders. Last year, the commercial use of the river hubs supported one thousand and twenty-six bookings for the City Botanic Gardens River Hub and three hundred and sixty-one bookings at the New Farm Park River Hub. Tour boat operators are also supported by an expanded network of pickup and drop off sites. Our recreation hubs, on the other hand, are typically smaller and cater to recreational and community users. We have a network of these spanning almost the entire length of the river through the L G I, including at River Hills, at Dutton Park, at West End, Kingsford Smith Drive, North Shore Hamilton and Murray. There's also a number of other ways the river access network is used, such as providing emergency vehicle evacuation points to support Queensland Water Police during river fire or hosting the Q U T dragon boat come and try day. There's even a planned collaboration to host ferry services direct to Tangaluma from our hubs. And there's many more patrons who simply use our hubs as a place to set up camp chair on a Sunday afternoon and toss a line in the water or enjoy the picturesque, picturesque views of relaxing out in the middle of the river. So whatever your speed, Mr Chair, the river access network has something for you. It's a fantastic asset and one of the many ways we embrace our city's interface with the river. And I'd like to thank the officers for this extremely informative presentation, particularly for our councillors whose wards are not along the Brisbane River. We learnt a great deal and I know that the councillors in attendance have really appreciated the information that was provided. Mr Chair, just before I close, I would just say that we've had the opportunity to welcome a number of new councillors to the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee. We had councillor Dixon come and join us when councillor McLaughlin retired. We have councillor Strunk, of course, replacing councillor Cassidy. And today, for the first time, we were able to welcome councillor Wolf to our committee now that councillor Mackay has, has resigned from his position. And I very much look forward to the contribution that councillor Wolf will make to the committee. She will fulfil the role of deputy chair. I know she's very excited at the prospect of what that means and what she will be able to do to contribute to the E P S committee. And I very much look forward to her first speech tonight and welcome you very warmly to our committee. And with those few words, I'll leave further debate to the chamber. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Davis. Are there any further speakers on the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Report? I see no one rising. We will now put the report. All those in favour say aye. Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Mark, City Standards, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting held on Friday, the twenty-fourth of October, twenty twenty-three be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Marks and seconded by councillor Adaman that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting date held on Tuesday, the twenty-fourth of October, twenty twenty-three be adopted. Councillor Marks, you've got the call.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair. Before I get to my last week's committee presentation, I just want to talk about a couple of events that are coming up regarding in my programme area, obviously in the waste space. So one of the things we've got happening on the ninth of November is the Eco Marines. They have a, they have a programme at their convention centre. And I know that you, as my deputy last year, Mr Chair, went along to represent me at that event as I was unable to due to a prior commitment. This year, I'm delighted that councillor Adaman, as my new deputy, will be going along to that presentation. Eco Marines do fabulous amount of work and I'm sure there's a few of you who have schools in their areas that do have Eco Marines. And I'm aware that they actually, we're on ninety-seven point three just recently talking about it. And the Kip and Robyn Bailey were talking to some of the Eco Marines and some of the good work they're doing in that space. And they gave them a couple of challenges, one of which apparently was for Robyn Bailey to cook something for Kip to eat out of something that she would normally throw away. Apparently it was banana cake and apparently it was okay. So good luck to Robyn because apparently she doesn't cook very much. The other two events are actually on the same day. We've got the sixteenth of November. So in the morning... The other two events are actually on the same day. We've got the 16th of November. So in the morning, I've got an event that I will be attending too, and that's the Clean Away Endeavour Foundation. So it's about a five-year partnership celebration and it's coinciding with National Recycling Week. Those of you who know me will know that I do like to do a bit of not only recycling of my own stuff, but I actually like to go shopping in a recycling place. I've managed to pick up a few outfits, jackets and stuff like that of fairly high-end brands for very little money, I must say. And I'm talking, you know, ten, fifteen dollars. So I'm not ashamed to say that I do buy and wear second-hand clothes wherever I can. And I can tell you that they do have some really good stuff out there at the at our Resource Recovery Centres, at the, sorry, at our Treasure Troves. And my staff always make fun of me because every time I go out there, I come home with back to the office with something obscure. Yeah, well, that that used to be the thing. So living in New Zealand, when you had the tips, it was a landfill site and you actually would come home more than what you took at the tip because you were all rummaging around and all everyone else's circular economy at its best. Apparently, we don't allow people to do that anymore, which is a bit sad. But we have our own version with curbside collection where we do encourage urban recyclers. The other thing that we're having that night is on 16th of November is the Waste Smart Awards here in City Hall. I'm grateful to all the councillors and the community who have managed to put in their nominations. There's quite a few nominations have been received. I'm not part of the voting or the panel that chooses the winners. But I know that the council officers, as always, will do a great job in choosing those that are most worthy, which is always difficult given how many worthy people do come along and are nominated that. And there's also the People's Award where people can make their nomination and vote on who they like the best and ideas. I know councillor Adams has a particular group out in her ward, and I think they've won it two years in a row. And I think through you, Mr Chair, you've also had some groups that are pretty good on the recycling space. So we can all just hope to live up to those really good role models. As I said, so last week's presentation was on the dangerous dog management. I'm very aware that this is a very emotive issue. And it's a very time-consuming issue and not something that the officers take lightly in this space. You may or may not be aware here in the chambers that this is a state government act that's actually under review at the moment with Minister Ferner. There have been a number of meetings over there in One William Street with Minister Ferner as a task force. I was there, as I've said before, representing the Lord Mayor and Brisbane City Council in this space. We did ask for quite a number of different considerations to be taken and into consideration with this process. Unfortunately, they weren't all taken on board and there was some splinter task force groups formed as a result of this, the task force. It hasn't been an easy space to deal in this. And as I said, and the officers continue to work with them. One of the things that we discovered is that if a dog has been removed from an owner as a dangerous dog and the dog is actually pregnant, we have no ability to keep those puppies. They actually have to go back to the owner. And that was just one of the submissions or additional items that we asked for, advocate for change in this space. Unfortunately, it didn't make the cut as an agenda item. So I can only hope that we can continue to work with Minister Ferner in this space. And obviously, we'd also like to bring the DG and I think it's minister Darth now again, I think, for DG. Given that the Q cat situation continues to get out of control and we really need to do something in that space because every day that we continue to keep dogs off the streets but with us is costing us thousands of dollars, well, costing rate payers thousands of dollars. So we're hopeful that Minister Ferner and minister Darth will get on board and we can continue the conversation in this space. So other than that, we didn't have any petitions and I'm happy to leave any debate to the chamber. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Marks. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Strunk.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Listen, I'm glad to hear that the review is going on on these dangerous dog issues with the legislation. I recently, well, probably this year, I've had two bad incidences in my ward. Well, not one in my ward and one actually in councillor Cunningham's ward, which I spoke to her about and sent her some information, asking her to maybe have a look at the review of the recommendations or the outcomes. But I'll say no more about that because it's actually now before the courts or will be before the courts soon if it's not now done. But the other one is definitely not before the courts. It was it occurred in one of my villages in Forest Lake. And what had happened was that a two people were out walking their dogs. And one had a very couple of small dogs and the other one had a couple of big dogs. And consequently, what had happened, and it doesn't happen that often, hopefully it doesn't happen that often, that there's an altercation between the two dogs or the two groups of dogs. And what happened was obviously, the big, one of the big dogs killed one of the small dogs, right? And then badly injured the other small dog, which got away thankfully. This all happens, of course, in front of the owners, of course. And of course, it's as councillor Marks said, it's a very emotive issue when this happens. And of course, and the council officers attended, the police attended, the council officers attended. They've got the wounded dog off to the vet. And everything was done in accordance with the process that council undertakes when these occurrences start or happen. But the disappointing part is that the owner of the dog that was, that got killed, right? At the end of the process, one of the outcomes that had happened was the fact that she was not able to be told where that dangerous, which was determined to be a dangerous dog, where that dangerous dog was being housed within the area that she lives. And now, we understand privacy and the privacy is important in these matters. But she can no longer, because she doesn't know which street this dog was, came from. Or even if that dog is still living there, for that matter. She wasn't being able to be told anything about it. So she's stopped walking the dog around her neighbourhood. Because she didn't know if she was going to have to relive that occurrence that happened right in front of her, of course, obviously with her dog. And so when she rang and told me the story, I thought, well, I can understand the privacy of the name. I can understand the exact address, but not even the street that the dog lived in was able to be made available to her. So it was really sad that she now has to walk the dog well away from where she lives, right? Which is sad that you have to do that. I walk my dog almost every afternoon before I go out later in the later in the evening or in the evening. Because, you know, dogs get they train us to when they want to have a walk, don't they? So it's really, it's really, I just think that if councillor Marks, through the review, can actually put that into the mix of the review, that you would think that the person whose dog was a victim should at least be able to know approximately where this other dog is. So that the the dog that survived, first of all, isn't going to be impacted on and I'm sure the other dog, I'm sure the two dogs would recognise each other, even through a fence. That the owner of the dog wouldn't have to actually be, I don't know. Yes, upset. Because it's, you know, as dogs, there's a lot of dog owners here in this chamber, you know, we just you know, it's a very emotive thing and it's really hard to sometimes put it into words. But we just really need to maybe look at that process, that aspect of the process, and maybe allow the owner of the dog that was impacted to at least know approximately where the other dog is so that they can continue to walk their dog in and around where they live. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you councillor Strunk. Are there any further speakers? I see no one rising. Councillor Marks, write a reply.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair. And I appreciate the opportunity to respond through you, Mr Chair, to councillor Strunk. I agree wholeheartedly. Unfortunately, we do have our hands tied with the privacy issue. It would be very distressing. I've only just recently come into possession of a dog. I've never been a dog owner. I've always just had a cat. We now have a dog. And yes, we have a fur baby. And when we say fur baby, I actually finally understand what they mean about fur baby. So my daughter often accuses me of treating her, as in the dog, like a baby. And she's quite right. I probably give more love to the dog than I do to the human babies at this stage. But they're 25 and 26. So, you know, too bad, so sad. But look, on a serious note, I agree councillor Strunk, through you, Mr Chair, that is distressing. And I would like to agree that this would be something that we could do, even if we were able to tell the attacked person whether the dog was even still in the area or not, or even if the dog had been put down or whatever the case may be. As I said, the meetings are continuing with the minister. I would be delighted if you were to get on board and ask any of your parliamentary colleagues to have a conversation with minister Ferner and more importantly with minister Darth. Because of the Q cat situation that I mentioned, these things can go on for months and months and months. And it's distressing to everybody, you know, and I often refer to the situation or the case of what I call the Bunnings dog, where a person walked into the Bunnings store with their dog off-leash and despite being told repeatedly to put their dog on a lead, they refused. This dog ultimately jumped up and grabbed a small dog out of a woman's shopping trolley and unfortunately, the dog passed away. Obviously, the dog was seized. It was under our care for some time. And then the situation happens where it goes into a Q cat situation where the owner disputes the decision. And we pay many thousands of dollars to look after that dog. And then when the decision finally comes through from Q cat, the dog can then be put down. And the owner of that dog then appeals to the general public and suddenly the public outcry is about the poor dog that we're putting down and everyone forgets about the poor Bunnings dog. So we are very keen to get these things sorted sooner rather than later. One council that we had at that first meeting, there's something like a $600,000 bill for this one particular dog. And I mean, in anyone's standards, that's a lot of money. So again, I agree with you councillor Strunk. I would like to see some changes in that space, even if it can put people's minds at rest. Obviously, I'm not prepared to break the law and those privacy laws. But again, I ask you and any of your colleagues, if you're talking to anyone over there at William Street, to have a conversation about it and see if we can make some forward headway in this space. So thank you very much, Mr Chair.
Thank you councillor Marks. We will now put the report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Howard.
Well, thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 24th of October, 2023 be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Howard and seconded by councillor Landers that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 24th of October, 2023 be adopted. Councillor Howard, you've got the call.
Thank you, Mr Chair. And I do have a few things to tell you about. We've been very, very busy in Brisbane this week. And these are just some of the things that I've had the privilege of going along to. But I know that during the week we all celebrated World Teachers' Day and Day for Daniel. And I think that it's very important that we do remember those days and particularly Day for Daniel. It's the work that that family has done from a very, very sad and tragic event is really extremely, extremely good. And of course, none of us can get anywhere without our teachers. So World Teachers' Day was great. We also had the Italian and Hellenic Business Networking Lunch. Now, you just have to get some Italian and Greek women together. And if you get Greek and Italian businesswomen together, oh my God, it was amazing, an amazing lunch. But it was fantastic. I know that the deputy mayor was there and I'm sure there's some stories to be told, which we're not allowed to tell outside of the venue. I'd also like to mention that I caught up with some Spring Hill business people. They've formed a Spring Hill Business Collective. And again, what a great opportunity to bring people together to discuss what's happening in their own area. And also Metro Arts, which I popped along to an event where it was Show Us The Art. And I just want to say a big thank you to Metro Arts. They have a new artistic director on board. But the work that they do to support local artists is just amazing. And so a big shout out to them. Of course, today is Halloween. And so Brisbane Central State School had their Halloween Disco last week. And I went along to that to be suitably scared. And of course, we also had Halloween movies in the park, at Victoria Park. And again, a fantastic opportunity for us all to have some fun in some of our fantastic parks. And I think I think I did see on Facebook councillor Wine's yet again amazing event. And I understand, I understand through you, Mr Chair, I understand through you.
Councillors, please.
I know, they're not interested.
Councillor Murphy.
I do understand through you, Mr Chair, that councillor Davis was there too, but that she didn't get the memo about oh, and you too, councillor, to me.
Councillor Howard, it was me who failed on that account, not councillor Davis.
Right. Well, do you know what? I think Halloween is all about maybe not getting everything right. So I think I do know that everyone had a really fantastic time. I do want to say a big thank you to our librarians. We had Matthew Riley as Writers in Residence at City Hall, I think it was last Thursday or Friday, I can't remember exactly when. But apparently, people queued for three and a half hours outside City Hall to see Matthew Riley. And it was well worth it. The poor man was still signing books up until 10 o'clock at night. So that was really something special. And I think that the other thing that I want to give a big shout out to is Vauxhallus Opera. They're a fairly new company. And I attended the Two Queens presentation on Saturday night up at the Old Museum. And again, it is just so fantastic to see our local talent being able to be showcased. And I want to say a big thank you to Vauxhallus for entertaining us so beautifully. Before moving to the report, yet again, I just want to answer some questions on notice that councillor Whitme asked. We had such a good time at the presentation that I almost forgot to answer councillor Whitme's questions. But her first one was about truth-telling exhibitions. If I can just say, it was about the presentation on our Museum of Brisbane's 20th birthday. And the first question was about truth-telling exhibitions. The museum tells me that they strive for an integrated approach to the content presented in their exhibitions. And they're programmed that honours and acknowledges the histories and experiences of First Nations people connected to this city. The Museum of Brisbane collaborates with Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander elders, artists and creatives, and are informed by their statement of intent, their commitment to reconciliation. And that can be found on the website. So through you, Mr Chair, I'd encourage councillor Whitme to go on to the Museum of Brisbane website just to get a little bit more information based around that. And in relation to councillor Whitme's second question, which was about what percentage of proceeds from the gift shop go towards the artist, I'm pleased to be able to say that stockists in the M O B shop receive 40 to 60% of the recommended retail price. And this varies between individual stockists depending on the arrangements that we have with each of them. So that's the answer to that. And just for the very last bit before moving to the report, I also want to welcome councillor Wolf to our fantastic committee. She joined us for the first time this morning. And I had to say to councillor Whitme that she was no longer the new girl on the block, but that we had councillor Wolf with us now. I'm delighted to welcome councillor Wolf. And I also am looking forward to her first speech, which means I should get on with my committee presentation. Moving to the presentation, we had Zoe Graham, who is the chief executive officer, give us a fantastic presentation on the Museum of Brisbane's 20th birthday. And it truly was a great opportunity and particularly, I feel for councillor Whitme, but not only for our new councillors, it was also the opportunity for some of us who didn't know some of the interesting history that had happened in the past. So I encourage all councillors in the chamber to check out the presentation, which of course is up on our website. Because it really is fantastic to think that the museum opened that the museum opened here in City Hall in October 2003 and that City Hall had previously hosted the City Hall Historical and Arts Committee and the Brisbane Civic Art Gallery and Museum. So we, we heard about some of the amazing opportunities that people of Brisbane have to witness some of the exhibits such as Mao's Last Dancer, the, the Wonder of, the, the World of Wonder with Margot McKinney. Was, Margot, of course, is world famous for her pearls. And it was, again, a great opportunity for us to hear about some of the amazing statistics that we have. So since its opening, City Hall has hosted 340,000 museum visitors and more than 35,000 clock tour visitors annually. A recent survey found that 95% of respondents agree that the museum enriches the cultural life of Brisbane. So through you, Mr Chair, I want to say a huge thank you to Zoe for the presentation, but also a huge thank you to the Museum of Brisbane staff who I know love what they do and it shows. And I encourage everybody to go shopping at the Museum of Brisbane shop. Thanks very much.
Thank you councillor Howard. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Whitme.
Yes, thank you Chair. And through you councillor Howard, I do actually want to thank you for the presentation that was on last week. It was very informative and quite a lot of fun going through what, how Brisbane's changed over the years, not just since the Museum of Brisbane has opened. Just to clarify, my question that was on notice was actually how many permanent exhibits are a part of the Museum of Brisbane that do explore truth telling? And Brisbane's very dark, dark and sordid history that we can't ignore. My understanding is the answer is actually zero and that they do have exhibitions that come through every now and then that tell the true history. But aside from the permanent fixture downstairs, there's not actually a, anything that actually goes into the truth of where Brisbane wa, was at the time of White Settlement. But yes, I just wanted to have that put on record that we probably can do better. And that's not a, for the very rare, very rare occasion, I'm not actually making a Labour versus L P statement here. This is just in general, we can all do better when it comes to truth telling. Thanks.
Thank you councillor. Are there any further speakers? See no one rising, councillor Howard, write a reply.
Yes, thanks, thank you, Mr Chair. And through you to councillor Whitme, I just would like to put on the record that in fact I have been to many an exhibition where the truth telling and storytelling from way back when has been on display. In fact, we have a permanent display that is about the River City, which certainly tells the story of our First Nations people. So I would again, I would again just ask councillor Whitme to perhaps go online to the statement of intent and the commitment to reconciliation, because I feel she will find some information there that will perhaps guide her. But, but also to take the time to go to the, to the permanent display that is on, on display at the, at the Museum of Brisbane, which certainly does tell the story of our First Nations. So on that note, I will put the, refer to Chair.
Thank you councillor Howard. We will now put the report, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Cunningham, how are you?
Hello, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 24th of October 2023 be adopted.
Seconded. It has been moved by councillor Cunningham and seconded by councillor Huang that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 24th of October 2023 be adopted. Councillor Cunningham, you've got the call.
Thanks, Mr Chair. Our committee presentation last week was from our corporate security branch on council's safety camera network. Council, as many councillors would know, has a network of safety cameras right across our city and suburbs to protect our assets and obviously to protect our community. We learned about technological improvements in our security operations centre, which are exponentially increasing our ability to report and respond to incidents in real time using live video analytics rather than primarily serving a reactive purpose after an incident may occur. This includes intrusion and vehicle detection cameras at council assets and object detection to identify when objects have been removed or left behind. It also includes loitering detection, which can identify any potential self-harm incidents. Mr Chair, this is a highly sensitive subject and many councils, councillors would be aware that we have cameras on the Story Bridge and these now employ loitering detection technology. It enables our security operations centre to notify Q P S when there is a potential incident and importantly to swiftly enable an emergency response at the location. Committee learned that there have been five such incidents in recent times where council was able to intervene and notify emergency services and prevent a self-harm incident from occurring, which is indeed a sobering statistic, Mr Chair. But it's a testament to the importance and the impact of our safety camera network here in Brisbane. Changing pace, we also learned about solar powered safety camera poles, which are being deployed in strategic locations throughout the city. And they promptly respond to events which require increased security and monitoring. There are many technical advancements happening in the space and I want to thank our corporate security team for taking advantage of these for the benefit of all of Brisbane's residents and doing so in such a responsible and a measured way. And I commend the report to the chamber.
Thank you councillor Cunningham. Are there any further speakers? See no one rising, we will now put the report, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, we move on to item five on the agenda, petitions. Are there any petitions? Councillor Wines.
Mr Chair, I have a petition from the residents of Alderley concerning a development, excuse me, a development application for number three Eider Street.
Thank you. Are there any other petitions councillors? See no one rising, councillor Landers, come up a motion to accept the petitions as presented, please.
Thank you Chair. Mr Chair, I move that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
Second. Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Landers and seconded by councillor Strunk that all the petitions be, as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, we move on to general business. Councillors, are there any statements required as a result of the Office of the Independent Assessor or Councillor Ethics Committee order? See no one rising. Councillors, are there any items of general business? Councillor Wolf, before councillor Wolf speaks, can I acknowledge councillor Wolf's family in the gallery? Welcome to City Hall. And can I also remind the chamber that under section 554B, a councillor's maiden speech is to be heard in silence. Councillor Wolf, when you are ready.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I'm humbled to speak today in the wonderful surrounds of this historical Brisbane City Council Chamber, where so many have come before us and contributed to shape and influence our hometown. I may be known about town as that Brisbane coffee lady. Today, I may leave behind this reference. However, enjoying Brisbane's coffee culture, as we all do, will remain an integral part of my connection with community. Just like the humble coffee bean has an incredible journey from crop to cup, before we can enjoy the fruits of its such success, I too have many experiences that have shaped me into the woman that I am today. Throughout my professional journey to date, one thing that remains consistently strong is my desire to serve the people and my community. Born in Redcliffe, where my grandfather was an alderman and mayor, I had a magical childhood growing up on a farm. My parents modeled to me healthy relationships, how to run a business, how to move beyond disappointments and the importance of the simple things like manners, respect and kindness. My parents also epitomized hard work. After school and on weekends, my sister and I would help mum and dad with their turf farming business, rolling up turf and driving the old Hino truck up to load. From a young age, we would prepare evening meals for the family also. I recall in the late 70s and 80s, the excitement of dressing up in our Sunday vest and travelling into the Big Smoke by diesel train to the Brisbane city. Visiting the Shingle Inn for milky coffee and patty cakes was a tradition. And we also enjoyed the Maya Christmas Windows displays every year. I also have fond memories of Brisbane City Hall, which we all meet in today, including performing in numerous ballet productions on the City Hall stage for Christmas in Storyland. Later in life, as a primary school teacher, I recall bringing lots of students to events here. More recently, as a business operator, I had the chance to be a dancing CEO and raise much needed funds for Women's Legal Services Queensland. Last year, I was delighted to deliver Dani Line and Drifwood's High Teas for the Margot McKinney exhibition here in the Museum of Brisbane. It is a great honour to now be serving the Brisbane community as a local councillor for Brisbane City Council and specifically the Walter Taylor Award. I'm so proud to call Brizzy my home for over 35 years and the Walter Taylor Award has played a significant part in my family's life. For example, my husband Peter lived in his first share house in Asgog Terrace, Tewong. He then went on to purchase his first home in Mossman Street, Taringa. During my university years, I fondly remember working across numerous sports girl stores, including the flagship store at Indrapili Shopping Centre. Then later in life, as a qualified teacher, I worked across numerous schools in Brisbane, including Indrapili State School. For my daughter, a highlight was enjoying her school formal at Hillstone in St Lucia and also being selected for the University of Queensland Young Scholars Programme at UQ on the St Lucia campus. Not forgetting Lone Pine Koala Sanctuary in Big, in Fig Tree Pocket is our family's go-to favourite destination when hosting overseas travellers and exchange students. I have always been driven and wanted to make a difference to people's lives. I started working in the service industry at age 14 in a local coffee shop. By the age of 19, I had started my first business, expressing, and was putting my debating and drama skills to good use, studying my first degree Bachelor of Arts Drama and delivering drama workshops to young children throughout several schools, including Indrapili State School. Completing further study and education, I then qualified as a teacher and worked full-time for the Department of Education for over 10 years. But that didn't keep me busy enough, so I continued to pursue my love for the arts and education. And together with both of those interests, I worked with many children's theatre groups, including Le White Youth Arts, Kite Theatre and the Out of the Box Festivals. I was then able to share and empower others through my love of children and teaching. And I took on the opportunity to lecture at QUT while completing my Masters of Education at the same time. In 2009, I needed a new challenge. So I decided to join forces with my great husband and put my energy into developing a small café that brought specialty coffee to the suburbs. Since opening this first café, we then expanded the business to multiple cafes, a wholesale coffee roasting business, a caffeinated ice cream business and a coffee college. Building a business from the ground up, I understand firsthand the challenges that business operators of today face with red tape, compliance, staffing, automation and the cost of doing business. Now, as a successful local businesswoman, I feel deeply connected to small business. With the desire to share my knowledge and experience, I would often guest lecturer and tutor and mentor students at QUT in the School of Entrepreneurial Studies with the continued desire to help people and community take their entrepreneurial ideas and bring them into fruition. A few key learnings I've learned across my 35-year professional career, I will bring to this role. Firstly, nothing in life comes easily. Hard work and patience is required. Secondly, through adversity is always advantage. Thirdly, if one acts with intention, integrity and persistence, you can make a difference in this world. And lastly, a thirst for knowledge and continued learning will always hold you in good stead when during and when enduring difficult times. For me again, in 2018, I returned to university and completed an executive business course in leadership through coaching and mentoring. More recently this year, I also completed the Pathways to Politics Programme at QUT. In summary, I stand here today bringing experience from multiple sectors, including the arts, education, coaching and mentoring, academia, business and hospitality. Beyond business, I am very proud of my efforts to do good in the local community and for Brisbane city. Before anything else, kindness and respect are always my drivers. I take social responsibility, environmental and sustainable governance very seriously. Living through the various toils of COVID and business, a glimmer of hope I recall was an invitation to attend the Queensland Community Foundation's philanthropy awards and being awarded the 2020 SME Philanthropist of the Year. Working with charities such as Beyond Blue, Cancer Council, Women's Legal Service Queensland and Oz Harvest, this makes my heart sing. The desire to make an impact and to assist the vulnerable in our community by making a difference to people's lives is my calling. Everything I do is about people and making community a better place. Being a councillor for the Walter Taylor Award now gives me the opportunity to do even more for our community and for our city. And I am grateful to be a part of Team Shrinna and part of the Brisbane City Council. I hear local issues firsthand, but locals love to share their issues with me over a cup of coffee. I understand we are dealing with the rising cost of living, feeling unsafe due to youth crime and the growing concerns for our environment. And as the Walter Taylor, Walter Taylor councillor, I will firstly, continue to preserve the rich history of the area while navigating change carefully as we prepare for the green and gold opportunity for our city for the 2032 Olympics and Paralympics. I will continue to believe in free enterprise and support small and family business. I'm also motivated to sustain our environment through practical environmentalism, improving our efforts to reuse, recycle, repurpose, while nurturing the next generation of environmental stewards who we can invest in and enjoy more green spaces and the 800 species of wildlife and 2,500 species of native plants. I'm driven to protect the vulnerable in our community and I am acutely aware of the struggles that many individuals and families are currently facing. I hope to be a movement of change in politics that leaves ego at the door and offers leadership that is focused on people, values and responsibilities. I want to take this opportunity to sincerely thank my family and friends for their love and support. Firstly, to my husband Peter, you are my rock. You are the yin to my yang. You're always there to lend a hand and make me laugh. To my daughter's Auntie, my greatest gift in life. I adore you, your gentle yet courageous attitude towards life. I'm so proud to see you achieve all that you have and what you put your mind to. To my parents, Ronan Glenus and Sister Anita, for your unwavering support and words of encouragement when I most need it. Whoa, it's heavy. Thank you to councillor James Mackay, now James Mackay, for your patience and diligence in passing on your knowledge and learnings. And thank you to Pip, Ben and Janelle Sir in the Walter Taylor Award office for accepting me with open arms. Thank you to Patrice, Denver, Maggie, Luke, Lewis and all the WIL MP for believing in me and supporting me. I appreciate you all. And thank you to all the fierce women, the Women Chiefs of Entrepreneurs International, all of my friends far and wide who contribute to touch. all of my friends far and wide who contribute to touch, who continue to touch my life and inspire me. I am also thankful to the Lord Mayor and my fellow councillors, to our party for welcoming me and supporting me in this new ride. Thank you to everyone for your support and encouragement. Now, anyone who knows me well will, will know that I do not commit to something unless able to give the time and effort required to carry out all duties and responsibilities to my highest standards and to achieve success. I once again extend my heartfelt thanks for entrusting in me with this important responsibility and I look forward to contributing my very best to the Walter Taylor Ward and to Brisbane as a whole.
Councillor Wolf, I'm sorry, your time has expired.
Where coffee may be my vice but serving community is my addiction of choice. Thank you.
Councillors, are there any other items of general business? Councillor Whitme.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I rise to speak on two points of general business. The first is to chat about the spookiest night on the bayside. The Halloween parade attracts countless people from across the city every year. The ghastly ghouls, scary skeletons and vicious vampires flattered bay terrace, but I had my knight in shining armour to protect me, my beautiful son Teddy. I cannot wait to see what Brenda and Bernie and the team at W C I have installed for us next year and I know I'll be there to support you every step of the way again. I also rise to speak on, to rise to follow in councillor Griffith's footsteps from last week and I just want to take a moment to thank my team. In my short time as councillor, I've come to appreciate the ladies in my office beyond measure. Working seventy plus hour weeks, I would not be standing here if it wasn't for them. I thank Jennifer for constantly reminding me to take my purse, my swif, my phone, my keys in my head. You are amazing and I'm very grateful to have you in that chair. Thank you to Carly, not only do you make sure that the office is rolling along smoothly, you also make sure that I'm taking the twenty minutes here and there that I can to make sure that I'm taking care of myself and staying safe. So thank you ladies and hopefully we're still here next year.
Thank you councillor Whitme, are there any further speakers? Councillor Adaman.
Yeah, thank you Chair. It was a pleasure to join family and friends of the late Professor Ludwig Bass last Sunday to unveil the sign, the sign naming the footbridge at Rafting Ground Park, Brookfield, in his honour. Rafting Ground Park played an important role in the history of our city. It was where timber was loaded and shipped down the river for use in the early buildings in our C B D. It is now one of our most popular parks in the Pullen Vale Ward and there was no one more prominent at that park during the past fifty years than Ludwig Bass. I never had the honour of meeting Professor Bass, but I wish I had. I get the impression that everything revolved around him and that he certainly got things done. The fact that the footbridge over Mogel Creek, linking both areas of parkland, was even built, was a testament to his commitment and determination. When he passed in October last year, his service appropriately was held at Rafting Ground Park and from that came a suggestion from a local resident that the footbridge be named in his honour. Chair, when hearing that story, I set the wheels in motion. The first step was to seek family support, which was very quickly forthcoming. Second, we needed to undertake community consultation to allow residents to have their say about the idea. Not only was the number of responses received among the highest I've received for a local project, it was certainly the most convincing with ninety seven point five percent in favour. And then finally, we needed council support, so I'd like to place on record my appreciation for the unanimous support this recommendation received from councillors in both committee and in the chamber earlier this year. Chair, it was a pleasure to have so many, so many family, so, so many of Professor Bass's family there on Sunday for the unveiling of the footbridge sign. It was one of those genuine feel good moments that we all get to experience in our role as councillors from time to time. The family asked that I pass on the appreciation, their appreciation to council for making this a reality, so I'm now doing that, placing that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Adaman, are there any further speakers? Councillor Strunk.
Yes, thank you Chair. Just before I start talking on, on an event that's coming up this Friday, I'd just like to put my congratulations into councillor Wolf on her session to councillor Walter Taylor. Just looking at, just listening to her story, she had me, she had me straight away when she mentioned the word coffee. So very well rounded story, background story and I'm sure she'll be able to use a lot of that life experiences as councillor. Now, just, I just want to talk about one event that's coming up this, and it was alluded to by the Lord Mayor in regards to the Diwali event that's happening on Friday, kicking off at about four thirty, the formal stuff about four thirty, goes right through to eight o'clock, just down to King George Square. Now, this is, this is the thirteenth year that it's, that it's been held in the Brisbane city, right, as an event in, in, in the city itself, I'm told. And, and of course, it's undertaken by F I C Q, the Federation of Indian Communities in Queensland, which I think have about forty six groups or thereabouts within their umbrella. And it's fundraised throughout the year to, to be able to hold it out here in King George Square. Now, Brisbane City Council, of course, are one of the, one of the sponsors, along with the Queensland Government and, and other small fundraising that they hold right throughout the year, to bring this fantastic event to the, to Brisbane city and to the people of Brisbane. It is of course Diwali, which is the festival of the light, which I know most of the councillors know this. It, it celebrates light over darkness, good over evil and jeez, don't we need some of that right now with what's going on in the world? So I just congratulate President Anup and his executive that have undertaken this work this year and just encourage anyone who's able to attend here or that are, that are, that are maybe watching, it's got great food, great dress and of course, the, the dancing is just unbelievable. They often, often bring people in from overseas and of course, there's a lot of professionalism in the dance and of course, there's a lot of the amateur as well with the little kids that get up, but the costume and the dance and the food, it's just a wonderful atmosphere, which I've enjoyed since I've been councillor. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor Strunk, further speakers, councillor Jenkinson.
Thank you Chair. I rise to speak on some fun events that have recently occurred in the Paddington Ward. On Saturday, the twenty first of October, Milton State School celebrated their annual fair on the green and although Gregory Park was a little more brown than green this year, everyone who came along had a fantastic day. I want to pay special thanks to Vince, the fair convener, Paul, the school principal, Thomas, the P and C president and the one dozen event coordinators and two dozen clean up volunteers for their huge efforts to making the day such a success for the school and the community. Also nearly three thousand eligible containers were recycled, which was an outstanding result for a sustainable event. As a past Milton State School parent myself, I know firsthand what a fabulous school it is and what an amazing community culture it has. Over six thousand people attended the day with twenty five community groups and local businesses represented. Seven hours of stage performances, including the junior and senior choirs, beginner and senior bands, as well as their strings band and these performances were a great, great way to showcase what the students have learnt during the year. Classes from prep to year four all had their time to shine on stage two with lots of fun group dance routines. The River City Steel Band, Premier Dance Academy and Forty Eight Dave kept the crowd entertained throughout the day and into the evening. There were ten rides, five active sport, active sports activities, the dunk tank, bake sale, local police expo, thirteen food and drink stalls, animal farm face painting barbecue, as well as a great display from our city resilience team at council, who played games with the kids and shared important information on fire and flood prevention. The Paddington team, Ward team were also there on the day giving away free native plants and I want to send a big shout out and thank you to Linda from my office and my volunteers Sharon and Sharon, who made the day run seamlessly. The highlight of the day was the mega raffle with a major prize draw of a Mazda C X three and I'd like to thank the Lord Mayor, Adrian Shrinna, for attending the fair on the green and drawing the car raffle prize.
Oh, really?
Councillors, please, through the chair.
The evening ended with a movie screening of Super Mario Brothers, which the kids all loved. Then just last Saturday, as councillor Howard mentioned, we held our outdoor cinema in the suburbs, Victoria Park for Halloween. Hundreds of families gathered, gathered and visited our gorgeous Victoria Parklands for a double feature. First up, we checked in for a stay at Hotel Transylvania, followed by some paranormal fun with Ghostbusters Afterlife. Food trucks served up Italian delights, hot dogs, doughnuts and popcorn. The parklands were decorated with spooky grass art and the trees were lit up with orange and purple lights. Thank you councillor Howard and Robert for attending the evening with me and a big shout out to nature for adding some extra special effects with a full moon, bats flying across the skies and an eerily cool wind. The free outdoor cinema in the suburbs programme runs throughout the year across Brisbane's park network and I'm pleased to announce that there are more movie events planned for the coming summer season at Victoria Park, Barrenburn. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Jenkinson, are there any further speakers? I see no one rising, I declare the meeting closed. Thank you councillors.